All righty, ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for the delay. The delay is all my fault, so if you'll forgive me. We will now get started with the November 16th Board of Supervisors meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Let the record show that all board members are here. Mr. Clay Forehand representing Madison, Mr. Jeff Black representing Western Caroline, Mr. Jeff Seeley representing Bowling Green, Mrs. Nancy Long representing Port Royal, Mr. Reggie Underwood representing Reedy Church, and I am Floyd Thomas representing the Mattapani District. I have asked Reverend Mrs. Fields if she would give us the invocation, please. And thank you so much at short notice. If you please stand.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let's bow forward. Prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you thanking you, Lord God, for this day. We thank you, Lord God, for everyone who is assembled here on today, Father God. We ask that you would have your way in this meeting on this evening, Lord God. We ask that you would bless the members in this meeting, Lord God, and on this board. And we ask, oh God, that you will continue to bless them. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Young folks, if you would come forward, we've got some special guests who will give us the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, whenever you're ready.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. There is something very special about hearing the Pledge of Allegiance from young folks, and it's also great to have them help participate in our governmental process. Before we do Board comments, are there any amendments to the agenda? I know one was supposed to be a recognition of Bishop Fields.
I have one, Mr. Chairman, that I was going to do in opening Board comments. If we could add Tony Beasley, a celebration to New Business.
Yes, we've got a lot of those. Any objections to that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That will be Agenda Item Number 8A. Mr. Beasley, or should we say World Series Champion Tony Beasley. Mr. Underwood? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, the motion carries. If the Board will indulge me, there are no other amendments. I would like to do this presentation first, and then we will do opening Board comments. In addition to the presentations, there was, excuse me, there was another presentation that I was supposed to do, but we are not quite ready for that. We wanted to recognize Bishop Dwayne Fields on his 23rd pastoral anniversary and also on his elevation to further Bishop Fields. So we will, at your request and my forgetfulness, make sure that you're here for our December meeting, and we will present you with a resolution of that effect at that time. But when we get to the Sunday School Union presentation, I'm sure you may forgive me. Mr. Sadler, if you'll get ready, I'll tell you when to start, but as the Board is aware, about 10 years ago, I believe, the county participated with the Sunday School Union in helping recognize all of the things that went on for the Sunday School Union. We assisted them, and they did some things on the outside of the halls. What they also did was put together a video, or rather footage, of several people who actually attended Union High School. For those who don't know, and for those watching on YouTube, this very building was Union High School, and it became Bowling Green Senior High School and then the middle school. And there was a point in time where the Board considered tearing the building down and building something else, but as a member of the Board at that time, we were able to save the building, preserve that history, and we would like the county to continue with preserving the history and highlighting the achievements of the Sunday School Union. So at this point, Mr. Sadler will queue up something, and this is...
We had excellent teachers. We may not have had...
Wait a second, yeah, start it over. This is actually just raw footage from people who talked about the Sunday School Union. Part of the goal and the plan that Dr. Hudson will talk about is we're going to find a professional videographer who can put this all together in a much better format and conceivably make one of the best documentaries ever for Caroline County. Now, Mr. Sadler, if you will show the video, it's a short video, it's about, well, eight minutes, but I think that's going to be great.
We had excellent teachers. We may not have had the best structure for the building and so forth and lacking of supplies, but the teachers were excellent, they were dedicated, the children were basically eager to learn. We had supportive parents, and we all wanted to do our best. The principal was truly outstanding, and we felt like one big happy family. It was an atmosphere of unity at all times.
One of my favorite moments was when we won the state championship in 1967, and that was my senior year, and Ross, my dad, and myself, we ended the game with a double play, and that memory always stays in my head, you know? And that's one of the joys I have about being with these guys, you know, the sweet memories we had, we were young, we were loose, and we had fun.
So I came out in 1950, we were the last class to graduate from the Union High School.
I remember, you know, being well cared for, the teachers were interested in what the students were able to accomplish, and they, in our classwork, in the summertime, we had lessons all the time, but sometimes we were over personal feelings and personal whatever also, and at that time, the school was segregated, of course, there were all black students there and all black teachers. Mr. Buckland was the principal of the whole town, they were there.
Mrs. Dungeon was my history teacher, and she had this thing, she said one day, she said, "When you go home today, look at the mural and tell the mural what you saw today." And at that time, I didn't understand it, so she says, "If you can't tell the mural you saw anything today or you learned anything today, you have wasted a day of your life." And that has stuck with me all through my life, that if I can't look at the mural and tell the mural I learned something today, I have wasted a day.
She had us stepping, and we best not to get out of step for a whole year, we practiced that. We hit it down pat, people just clap when we start to go, da-da-da-da-da. We had it like soldiers. We really did, I mean, it was something to say.
So the principal and the teachers worked very hard and interacted with the students to do the very best that they could because they had to work twice as hard as some of those students who had more advantages, that type of thing, to help them to become successful in life. And actually, after 1948-49, my aim was to return to West New York, New Jersey, but that didn't happen because I was asked to continue to work in Caroline County. The pay wasn't that good as it was in New Jersey, but I stayed, and I enjoyed every many of it.
My name is Dr. Arnett Arthur Rogers, and I am the senior pastor here at Shiloh Baptist Church, Bowling Green, Virginia.
As you grow up and you look back over your life and you think about all of these things, and when we get together now, we talk about the wonderful times that we spent at Union High because we were like a family. It's different from the children of today because they didn't have, they don't have that closeness that we had because most of our teachers knew us, knew our families, they had taught our sisters and brothers before us, and they knew us, and it was just a closeness thing.
It was very, very traumatic for the older citizens and then the families to all of a sudden be given 30 days to vacate what had been home to you, your mother and your grandmother and so forth, and then to find a place in another county. For many of us, we ended up in Spotsylvania, as did my family and many of the other families from the Old Bethlehem Church where we were members of since its early beginnings. My grandfathers on both sides, as a matter of fact, were two of its founders.
No, nobody compensated us because we had 100 acres of land, and they didn't compensate us at all.
They just took the land and told you to find somewhere else.
Right, yeah.
Now, when I entered Union High, it was the first class that attended for five years. Prior to that, there were only four years of high school. My sisters all attended during that period. There was a young man in the county, every time I would see him, he would hear me about being his classmate. The young ladies had to take six weeks of agriculture and the young men, six weeks of home economics, and of course, it was good to know, you know, with various rains and the names of the animals and all.
Yes, that's for me, a part of our life, very important thing for me, that's for me, a part of our life. It was a leading area, you know, we were together, we did a lot of keeping church, keeping schools and churches together. And what hurt is, so once a year, there was Sunday School Union, it was a Sunday, but they changed it. I thought that was good, but it brought all the churches together on a fifth Sunday. Arthur was a great man, and I want to, you know, he sort of likes movement. See, those days, it's so different from now, and Arthur, you don't understand this. My baby was working in a workplace store, he couldn't buy clothes and never took a work there. He was in a white stock, he could do that, but he couldn't get a hand on that.
I remember, you know, being well cared for, the teachers were interested in what the students were able to accomplish, and they, in our classwork, in the summertime, we had lessons all the time, but sometimes we were over personal feelings and personal whatever also, and at that time, the school was segregated, of course, there were all black students there and all black teachers. Mr. Buckland was the principal of the whole town, they were there, and I started up there in the seventh grade because I went to the dawn school down here in Dawn, and it was overcrowded, and we had three rooms there, but they were still overcrowded, so the seventh grade, I shifted up to the elementary school at Union High, and I went there and graduated from the seventh grade, we want to call it graduation, and then we went four years into Union High School, but the teachers all took apart in preparing us for life besides just education, personally, because, I'll have, most of them were uneducated at the time, my mother, I think she went to the sixth grade, my father went to the seventh, but that was it, they were uneducated, so a lot of the things that they were able to help us with and teach us how to move on to face life was done by the teachers there. They took a personal interest in the student, as well as educational interest, and they inspired us to move on to higher education. I went to Virginia State, but I left Virginia State and moved to New York, and graduated from City College, and then I went to Yeshiva College, got my master's in social work, moved back to Virginia and worked at the Medical College of Virginia for 13 years of clinical social work.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sadler. That's just a part of the raw footage, and you could see there was Mr. Walter Young and Ms. Cleo Coleman were talking about them being moved from their land to make way for Fort Aphee Hill. When I saw this video on Facebook, I said this would be a great video to have right at our display outside since there's a camera, I mean, there's a TV there, you could just push a button and see this, but I thought it was very inspirational just to hear the relationship between students and teachers, the respect that they had for their teachers and the love they had for their school. And I said to somebody before, we ought to show this video to every kid in the middle school to make sure they had the same kind of feeling. So we'd like to do that. Dr. Hudson and I met with the Sunday School Union Board via Zoom, and we're going to polish this one up a little bit and then try to get it on the wall so folks can see it, and we're going to try to make sure that there's a full-fledged documentary that goes behind there. Dr. Hudson, if you would like to say anything behind that, I know you're working on the whole project and program, and you're the president or chair of the Sunday School Union.
I am the president of the Sunday School Union.
President of the Sunday School Union, thank you.
Yes, yes. So Chairman Thomas and other Board of Supervisors members, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. I do have other Board members with me here. For those who don't know, I am Dr. Sonya Jackson Hudson. I am the current president of the Sunday School Union. The other Board members that are present with me here this evening are from Madison District, Diggin' Tammy Ballot, Bowling Green District, Sister Latoya Dedwiler, myself, I'm from Bowling Green District. From the Mattapani District, we have Diggin' Al Lee. Brother Kenneth Page is also from that district, he could not be here. From Reedy Church, we have on our board, Diggin' Charles Thornton, and then Reverend Karen Buford, who's the current pastor of Shiloh, could not make it this evening. And from Western Caroline, Diggin' Levon Fox could not meet here this evening. But as you've been saying, Chairman, this is just a raw footage, we want to make sure everyone understands that, it is a raw footage, and the purpose of what we're trying to do with this video is to be able to tell the story, to tell the story of Union High and also to tell the story of the Sunday School Union. And as for those that don't know, the Sunday School Union sold this property to the county for $1, and at that time, the name of it was the Sunday School Union of the Baptist-colored People of Caroline County, Virginia. The name has since been changed. The purpose of it is not only to include that information, but we want to include some information that includes the original founders of the Sunday School Union that were so instrumental in the history of our people, and that would be from the St. John Baptist Church, Jerusalem Baptist Church, and Shiloh Baptist Church, the original churches. So we will be working on this video, we are committed to complete the video, and if we need any help from the Board of Supervisors along the way, we just hope that there's a handout that you will be willing to assist and help us, and that's all we want to say, but thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Before you go, let's see if there are any questions. No questions? That sounds like they all said yes to me.
Sounds like yes to me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And if you folks would like to stay, you know, feel welcome to stay. If you'd like to leave, we understand. We will get to, next agenda item is opening Board comments, and I'll go first, and then we'll start, Mr. Forehand. I have a couple of comments that I wrote down just to make sure I covered all the things I wanted. First, the county lost two citizens who made a tremendous contribution to Caroline in the last month. Condolences to the family of Herb Collins, who was a former curator at the Smithsonian and a significant contributor to all of Caroline's historical societies. His collection of White House china at the Port Royal Museum is second only to the actual White House collection. And sympathies also to the family of Coach George Balding. He served the school system for almost 50 years as a coach.
them being moved from, from their land to make way for Fort Apie Hill. When I saw this video on Facebook, I said, this would be a great video to have right at our display outside since there's a camera. I mean, there's a TV there. You could just push a button and see this. But I thought it was very inspirational just to hear the relationship between students and teachers, the respect that they had for their teachers and the love they had for their school. And I said to somebody before, we ought to show this video to every kid in the middle school to make sure they had the same kind of feeling. So we'd like to do that. Dr. Hudson and I met with the, with the Sunday School Union Board via Zoom and we're going to polish this one up a little bit and then try to get it on the wall so folks can see it. And we're going to try to make sure that there's a full fledged documentary that goes behind that. Dr. Hudson, if you would like to say anything behind that, I know you're working on the whole project and program. And you're the president or chair of the Sunday School Union?
I am the president of the Sunday School Union.
President of the Sunday School Union, thank you.
Yes, yes. So Chairman Thomas and other Board of Supervisors members, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. I do have other board members with me here. For those who don't know, I am Dr. Sonia Jackson Hudson. I am the current president of the Sunday School Union. The other board members that are present with me here this evening are from Madison District, Diggin' Tammy Ballot. Bowling Green District, Sister Latoya Dedwiler, myself, I'm from Bowling Green District. From the Matapanide District, we have Diggin' Al Lee. Brother Kenneth Page is also from that district. He could not be here. From Reedy Church, we have on our board, Diggin' Charles Thornton. And then Reverend Karen Buford, who's the current pastor of Shallow, could not make it this evening. And from Western Caroline, Diggin' Levon Fox could not meet here this evening. But as you've been saying, Chairman, this is just a raw footage. We want to make sure everyone understands that. It is a raw footage. And the purpose of what we're trying to do with this video is to be able to tell the story, to tell the story of Union High and also to tell the story of the Sunday School Union. And as for those that don't know, the Sunday School Union sold this property to the county for $1. And at that time, the name of it was the Caroline, was the Sunday School Union of the Baptist Colored People of Caroline County, Virginia. The name has since been changed. The purpose of it is not only to include that information, but we want to include some information that includes the original founders of the Sunday School Union that were so instrumental in the history of our people. And that would be from the St. John Baptist Church, Jerusalem Baptist Church and Shallow Baptist Church, the original churches. So we will be working on this video. We are committed to complete the video. And if we need any help from the Board of Supervisors along the way, we just hope that there's a help, a hand out that you will be willing to assist and help us. And that's all we want to say. But thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Before you go, let's see if there are any questions. No questions? That's, that sounds like they all said yes to me.
Sounds like yes to me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And if you folks would like to stay, you know, feel welcome to stay. If you'd like to leave, we understand. We will get to next agenda item is opening board comments. And I'll go first and then we'll start Mr. Forehand. I have a couple of comments that I wrote down just to make sure I covered all, all the things I wanted. First, the county lost two citizens who made a tremendous contribution to Caroline in the last month. Condolences to the family of Herb Collins, who was a former curator at the Smithsonian and a significant contributor to all of Caroline's historical societies. His collection of White House china at the Portmore, at the Port Royal Museum is second only to the actual White House collection. And sympathies also to the family of Coach George Spalding. He served the school system for almost 50 years as a coach, athletic director and school board member. Both will be missed. Looking forward, I'd like to congratulate all those who were elected or reelected. And as we say for the Board of Supervisors, this board will end in December. And although all the members are returning, it's what's going to be considered a new board when we start our terms in January. And to that point, I'm going to ask us all to remember that what we're doing here is actually bigger than us individually. It's bigger than each one of us and it's really bigger than us collectively. And when we cast aspersions on other board members or staff, it's really not something that we should do. And as board chair, I should have stopped those and, and ask any of us, if you have a problem with staff or other board members, that we would please discuss those with them directly. I serve, and I believe each of us serves with the single purpose of making Caroline better. Our passion and our determination can sometimes push the envelope, but we must not go too far. We may not always agree and regardless of who you are, you're not always right. But let us always work towards the main goal of making Caroline better. To my knowledge, no board member or staff member did anything wrong when communicating about potential new projects. None of us can control the social media misinformation or the false rumors. We are positioned to do great things for Caroline. And I ask that we stay focused on our main goal of making Caroline better. Those are my comments. Mr. Forehand, I'll let you go next.
You're okay? I did enjoy the presentation regarding the Sunday School Union and I definitely support that. It's been a couple of years since I read up on the Sunday School Union. But my impression then and is now was that it, it was way, I don't know, not, not ahead of its time, but it was, it's just impressive what was accomplished with what was going on. The level of service they were able to collectively provide their children was impressive. And it's, it's definitely worthy of lasting recognition in this county. I, I see it as something that brought this county ahead and something that we can learn from today. So I definitely support that. And, you know, I, again, I can't give it enough accolades. I was left kind of dumbfounded because I'm not from here. I've been here about 13 years, but when I learned of it and then started doing some digging and reading the walls in this building and reading the, the other documents that had been written about it and, you know, it just left a very lasting and impress, impressive impression. So thank you for bringing this forward and I look forward to seeing the, the products later. Thank you.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, I just, I'll be brief. I just, first of all, I wanted to once again reiterate, thank you to all the, the veterans out there. During Election Day, I was talking to a veteran in my district and he, he said, and I posted on my Facebook page, he thought it was very appropriate that Election Day and Veterans' Day are so close because he said, that's why I served, to make sure that democracy continues. I thought that was pretty powerful and I really kind of thought it that way, but so thank you to everyone who did serve in our armed forces. And I also want to thank all of my constituents on who came out to vote. It's always, I'm out there every year with a newsletter, no matter what the year. And it's always fun to be able to see people and talk to people. The sad thing for us, I guess, is early voting. We don't get to see everyone anymore because some people go on early vote. But for those people that do decide to vote on Election Day, it is really, it's just, it's really nice to be able to sit down and talk to people and hear their concerns. So that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy?
I'd first like to start out with spending my condolences to the family of George Spalding, who spent many years in the community and in the school system. He will be missed. Veterans' Day on the 11th was one of the best attended in the county in a very, very long time. The keynote speaker was Mike Marata, Executive Director of Warrior's Heart. And our invocation and benediction was performed by Reverend Gilbert Garcia of Mount Tabor Baptist Church. I'd like to thank the town of Bowling Green, the American Legion Post 221 for their partnership with the county and my wife for making the refreshments happen. I also attended the same day as Veterans' Day, the Caroline's Promise Young Entrepreneurs Expo at the Meadow Event Park, which is my favorite event showcasing our future business leaders. The building was jam packed with young people who had created a business or a product to sell. Congratulations to Shamika Baker Latney, Executive Director, and all the young entrepreneurs from the movie creators. I don't know if anybody saw, but we have a young man who was there who was producing videos, to the quilt makers, the woodworkers, to the bakers, to every product imaginable and to the entire event that was wonderfully done. We'll move forward to the 25th of November, we will have the annual Bowling Green Christmas Tree Lighting at Pitts and Man's at 5:00. This year's music will be performed by Salem Church Choir and their bell choir. During the, during that day, there will be an annual tinsel town market at Town Hall, which will be filled with gifts and crafts and vendors and business owners in town will be running cooperative, cooperative sales and drawings for gifts at the Bowling Green, Bowling Green Express. I understand there's a ticket to get stamped at each business to qualify for drawings, trying to entice everybody that comes to town to look at the businesses in town. So I hope everybody will participate. On the 9th of December, the town will have its annual Christmas parade at 2:00 PM. It's daytime this year, not nighttime. I know people aren't happy, but it's a little bit safer during the day. The theme is Merry Main Street. Applications can be found on the town's website. After the parade, the public is invited back to Town Hall for cookies, cider and to wait for the decisions on the judge to award trophies. One more, I again will sponsor along with Pitts and Man Realty, the Bowling Green and Residence Holiday Lighting Contest. Last year, we had 35 entries up for lights in the town. This year, the judging will be on the 8th of December. A map will be available on Facebook as it is the last couple of years. So come to town, drive around and look at the lights. It's, it's been a highlight of many folks. They've been talking about looking at the lights in town. And last, I have asked that the board put Tony Beasley on the agenda to talk about a celebration for, for our very own who won the World Series, who Mr. Thomas knows more about that than I do. And Mr. Black, I'm not a baseball person, but I think it is a well deserved celebration for somebody who, who is from here, served here, played ball here and then went on to the major leagues to play. And we'll talk about that later. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Tony did say he was going to be in the Christmas Parade. I don't know if that's part of your thing. Okay. And then we're going to try to get him at our December board meeting. Ms. Long?
Yes, I want to thank, can you hear me, David? My goodness. All right, now I know why they took, Mr. Black took it off. You've got to get right up on this thing here. All right. I want to thank everyone for coming out and voting since we have a really tight vote still not certified yet. It just goes to show that every vote counts and I look forward to serving another four years with these gentlemen. I also wanted to clarify something. It's, it's hard and I learn every day when we study an issue. It is, government is constantly moving. But there is one thing I do know is that this county could not function day by day with dealing with citizens' needs if it was not for our staff, for those dedicated people that come in every day and, and take care of what needs to be done, be it picking up trash along the roadside or getting in a rescue squad to help someone. They are the backbone of this county and should always be respected. I also wanted to clarify because I didn't know when I first got into government, what this word really meant as far as government goes. The word proffer. Proffer is not a dirty word. Proffer is where when someone comes into the county and wants to do something, that we work with them and we try to get the very best deal, the best structure, the nicest looking construction as possible before permits are given. That is our negotiating time. So yes, it'd be fine with me if everybody in planning had an email address that said Mr. Mrs. or Miss Proffer because I want them out there working their bottoms off to get the very best deal for us. So that, that is fine. It is fine. It is a good thing because once something is confirmed and signed off on, we lose that negotiating power. And then my other issue was I wanted to make sure that you all do know that if staff is getting, has a computer at home and they're working at home and they're getting emails at home, we have a great staff right down here that okay's that and keeps us as safe as technically possible in this day and age with all the new technology coming out. So working at home is allowed by some of our employees, a great deal of them, just as we can go online now and have a doctor's appointment via Zoom. It's, it's the changing world. So just feel comfortable with those two things. We are protecting the government and you and your privacy as best we can and that we are working hard when applications come into this county to try to develop the best products possible. Thank you so much. And as far as personal things go for the county, we've talked about a couple of people who have passed. For those of you who are familiar with the small town in Port Royal, Mr. Ricky Banks passed this past weekend. He had served our Planning Commission years ago and on Town Council, was born, grew up in Port Royal and he will be missed. Also, I wanted to say that I also attended the Young Entrepreneurs Function and it was really nice. It was a longer drive, but it was nice. We had it down at the fairgrounds and, and that gave a little more room and opening and space for them to set up because that, that program is just continuing to go under Shamika's guidance. So encourage any children in your family to look forward to next year. Let's just keep filling up that building with, with new business people coming along to fill up Caroline in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Mr. Underwood, board comments?
I do have several comments. I also attended the Young Entrepreneurs Program at the Meadow Event Park and it was great. Shamika Baker Latney was one of my students and she does an outstanding job and she really understands children and she understands how to get the best out of children. So that's a gem that I think we're blessed to have as part of the Caroline's Promise. Second, Veterans' Day, I tell people all the time that my dad was a veteran, but my dad served in World War I. Don't you think about that for a minute. World War I at the age of 16. So Veteran Day means a lot to me, to my family. My brother was the second youngest, second lieutenant, the youngest in the United States, attended MIT University and he was a graduate of MIT. My other brother was a double Purple Heart winner in Vietnam. So Veteran Day means a lot to me because they served and sometimes they could not be served here, but yet they served with valor. I had the pleasure of attending the 23rd anniversary of Bishop Fields at Oxford Mount Zion. It was a wonderful day. And I compared him to the Blackbird aircraft that the Army, the Air Force uses because he's a high flyer. If you ever get a chance to him teach and preach, I think you should maybe attend one of his services and I know you'll be blessed. My condolences to the Spalding and Collins family. I knew Coach Spalding well. When I was coaching, he was there at the high school. He had retired then, but he was always there to give me support and guidance and certainly I appreciate that. Certainly, Mr. Collins was absolutely wonderful with the Services Board over by the school at the, at the Spalding Building. My next comment is, over the last month, there were some ugly things said about employees that they were doing things untoward and they weren't transparent and they weren't this and they weren't that. And it's very disappointing when, when a board member makes those accusations and they're not true. Or if a board member meets someone, the same process is in place when businesses come to Caroline County. Their first point of contact usually is Mr. Wilson. And Mr. Wilson will then contact a board member and ask you if you wouldn't want to meet with that or some of that representative. I think 99.9% of the time, Mr. Wilson, I've said, nope, I don't want to talk to them. I want them to come before the public and say what they have to say. And I still believe that. I think that when a company wants to come into the county, you should be able to hear what they have to say and what they have to offer. But lies shouldn't be part of a conversation during an election or during when you're, at any time. Just tell the truth and let the truth be what it's going to be. I don't back up often. Never in life have I backed up and nor do I intend to. I'm going to call a spade a spade. I'm a fighter. I don't make any apologies for that. If you strike me, I'm not going to turn the other cheek. I'm going to strike back. I will do everything in my power to make Caroline County the absolute best county in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Are we all going to agree? Absolutely not. Are we all going to use the same method to get there? Absolutely not. The goal is for us to get there, for us to be the best. And I will continue to fight for all of those of us who are reelected. Hope you have a, we have a great four years and we take Caroline County from good to great because we are well on our way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. And that concludes board comments. We will now go to the next agenda item, which is appointments. Healthy Generations, area on aging, Board of Directors, Citizen Representative. I think, Mr. Underwood, you were looking for someone and do you have someone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a person. She's in Mr. Forehand's district. She was on the Social Services Board. Her name is Joyce Johnson. And I've talked to Mr. Forehand and I've talked to her as well. And she's agreed to serve on the Healthy Generations Board.
Okay, would you put that in the form of a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board appoint Ms. Joyce Johnson to the Healthy Generations Area on Aging Board of Directors as a citizen representative.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Underwood, seconded by Mrs. Long. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forehand, Planning Commission for the Madison District?
Weber.
Okay, say, say it again just for me.
Mr. George Weber.
Okay. Mr. Forehand is, is requesting to reappoint Mr. George Weber to the Planning Commission. Is there a second? Okay, motion's made by Mr. Forehand, seconded by Mrs. Long. Okay, motion's made by Mr. Forehand, seconded by Mrs. Long and Mr. Underwood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Building Code, Board of Appeals. We've got Madison, Reedy Church, and Bowling Green districts.
I'm not ready for the Madison appointee.
Reedy Church, are you ready, Mr. Underwood?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, we appoint Mr. Ernest Rollins to the Building Code Board of Appeals.
Okay, Ernest Rollins. All right, hold on one second. Mr. Seeley, do you have one?
I was gonna reappoint Mr. Craig Woodward.
Okay. Could I have a motion that lists those two names, Mr. Rollins for Reedy Church and Mr. Woodward for Bowling Green?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Underwood, seconded by Mr. Seeley for Mr. Ernest Rollins for Reedy Church, Mr. Craig Woodward for Bowling Green for the Building Code Board of Appeals. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Any other appointments for the Transportation Committee? Mr. Black?
I have one. I'd like to appoint Shannon Taylor to the Transportation Committee.
Aaron Taylor?
Shannon Taylor, yes.
Shannon?
Shannon Taylor, yep.
Okay, and I have one I think is from Mr. Forehand's district too. And then we'll just go ahead and get started, Mr. Hughes. But this one is Carrie Ayers and she is a bus driver who is very vocal about the road, so I think she'd be good. I have her contact dated for you, Ms. Hall. So if we could appoint Shannon Taylor and Carrie Ayers, is there a motion for that, Mr. Black? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Black, seconded by Mr. Seeley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That motion too carries unanimously. All right, we will cover the consent agenda. Anything, anyone would like to have pulled from the consent agenda?
As presented?
Actually.
Oh, we got one.
Waiting for my mic to turn on. Forget pull aye.
Aye.
Aye, just have a couple of questions.
Okay, okay. Well, let's discuss your questions and then we could probably do this in one vote. What are your questions, Mr. Forehand?
I read the packet and there was no detail as far as what the violation was that's prompted this to be on our consent agenda.
Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, Mr. Forehand, so the applicant had.
Move the mic in front of you.
The applicant conducted an event after being told that the event was not allowed and was not in conformance with their SUP. They were informed in writing three times, in person twice, and then sent a notice of violation once the event did occur. And they were informed that if they did indeed conduct the event, that we would ask the Board to authorize a public hearing to revoke the special exception.
And the process, I mean, you're good. The process for revoking any special exception permit, if the Board, Planning Commission determines there are issues, we have to have a public hearing before their special exception can be revoked. So being on the consent agenda just gets us to the public hearing. Just leave it on.
Agreed. Just, it was just notably absent from the packet, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. So he's satisfied with aye. Is there a motion to approve the entire consent agenda, A through I?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Seeley, seconded by Mr. Forehand to approve the entire consent agenda items, A through I. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Parton, do you expect a long closed meeting? I think you do, don't you? I didn't even have to add.
There are four topics, I believe, for discussion, Mr. Chairman. We could perhaps break it, maybe cover a few of them now and then the rest at the end of the evening or however you want to do it.
All right, I think the Board will, the Board will go into closed meeting now and we will cover as much as we can and hopefully be back close to 7:30 or as close to 7:30 as we can. And then we will conduct a public comment and we will just take care of the other closed meetings at the end. Mr. Seeley, you got your own?
Yeah, I thought there was one sitting here. I move that this Board convene in closed meeting pursuant to personnel exemption of 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia to discuss the employment of the county administrator and building official, cybersecurity exemption of Section 2.2-3711.A.19, the Code of Virginia to discuss plans to protect county information technology systems from cybersecurity threats and briefings from staff on services that can be, that can protect against such threats and the real estate consultation with legal counsel and contract exemption of Section 2.2-3711.8.3 and A.8 and A.29 of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney and discussions with staff regarding, A, performance agreement relating to an economic development project and, B, the potential acquisition of real estate by the county for use in utility expansion project both in the Port Royal District but not related to one another where discussion foregoing in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Seeley for closed meeting under those items, seconded by Mr. Underwood. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for your attendance. We should be back close to 7:30 if we can. So we will stand in closed meeting.
All right, we will reconvene. Mr. Seeley, you've got a motion to come out of a closed meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such business matters that were identified in the motion convening in a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Is there a second to Mr. Seeley's motion to come out of a closed meeting? Motion made by Mr. Seeley, seconded by Mr. Underwood. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forehand, do you certify that only those things we went into a closed meeting were discussed? Mr. Forehand?
I so certify.
Mr. Black?
I so certify.
Mr. Seeley?
I so certify.
Mrs. Long?
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood?
I so certify.
And I as well certify. That takes care of the closed meeting. We have now reached our public comment section of the agenda. Public comments are for citizens to discuss any matter they wish before the board, as long as it's not a public hearing that was scheduled for today or recently conducted. So when you come before the board to make public comment, please state your name and your voting district. Do not give us your address, just your name and your voting district. If you're not from the county, just tell us what county you're from. So we will now declare the public comment section to be open. Is there anyone who would like to speak for public comment?
Hello, my name is Amanda Martin Sharpetta. I'm in the Bowling Green Voting District. I spoke earlier in May of this year, asking if the county would be open to having Parks and Rec have a league for softball and baseball that would be separate of Little League. I've spoken with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I know it's possible. And I went with some other parents and started a petition, and got 254 signatures in the last three weeks of residents who are also in support of the county, starting up a Parks and Rec league for softball and baseball for the youth. And I would ask that you guys would be open for that. So that's what I'm here for again.
Okay. All right, normally, we don't do question and answer, but you want us to start in the summer?
I don't have anything, anything that you would give us. We don't have summer, we don't have fall, and anything that Parks and Rec would be able to give to the kids is what I'm asking for, is just anything.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Howard, you'll contact her right now or some point during the meeting, and then report back to the board as far as what we do from there. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Kevin Collins, Reedy Church District. Just wanted to touch on some of the opening comments from tonight. One in particular that really kind of concerns me is the use of private emails for government business. I am a federal contractor. I've been through several trainings regarding private personal information, as well as, I'm sure you're aware, county information that you just came out of a closed hearing that wouldn't normally be accessible to the public. Matters like that should always be handled on county email, and I'll provide you with some reasons why. Government agencies handle sensitive information, require a high level of security. Private email services may not have the same level as the government systems. Using private email accounts increases the risk of unauthorized access and potential data breaches. You also have compliance with record-keeping laws. No one is keeping account of private email addresses. FOIA does not allow for private email addresses unless they are subpoenaed by a court. So conducting any sort of business on a private email address is, should be completely frowned upon by the county. And I've already requested a copy of the county's electronic communications policy, which I would assume each one of you has received a copy of and has signed it in accordance with how the county operates and handles their business. Again, that gives transparency and accountability. We just had a recent FOIA request in the county that exposed several of the board members using personal emails for company or for county business. We have lawyers from private organizations that are writing motions for our supervisors that still not has been addressed by the county attorney, which I think it needs to be, at least privately with you guys. I don't know what goes on behind closed doors. But that's very serious concern, that we have board members that think it's just A-OK to send personal emails home to work on. If you're working on county business, you are required to have a county laptop or some sort of a secure device that you can access this information. You're dealing with a lot of personal stuff and a lot of important things, and they shouldn't be going to profferman@verizon.net, because nobody has control over that email address. If it doesn't end in a Caroline County email, it shouldn't be included. Now, of course, you've got private citizens that send emails. Obviously, you're going to have some correspondence with private email addresses, but they should always be from your county device, so we as citizens can make sure you are doing what you say you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment?
Dr. Jim Malahusky, Bowling Green District. My family and I have been residents from Caroline County for the last six years. First off, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for the work you do for all of us. I'm here to address concerns related to recent disturbance, recent disturbing events in Sparta. I'm not a stranger to explosions, from IEDs in Afghanistan to years as an Army Ranger. I am a disabled veteran. Being a veteran is a family tradition. My wife is a veteran, two of our children are veterans, another is serving today. Nearly every generation of our family has served the nation, going back to the Revolutionary War. When I worked for the U.S. Senate, I helped write PTSD awareness legislation and bills to take care of retiring military working dogs. I think this gives me a solid basis for the concerns I bring to the board this evening. On November 6th, 10:36 a.m., there was a sizable explosion that shook my house. My house is 200, 230 years old. Doesn't like those kinds of things. The blast came from a vent at the former Leashes of Valor property across the street. A few facts. Leashes of Valor said they came to Caroline County because it was a peaceful and quiet community. Sparta is an agricultural preserve and a rural neighborhood. There are more than a dozen homes, apartment complex, a gas station, a children's playground, and a church within a few hundred yards of where they set off their explosions. Leashes of Valor is a national nonprofit organization. It does not provide training to duly constituted law enforcement. They are dedicated to helping veterans suffering from PTSD get the help they need. It is the name of the non, it is the name on the non-transferable special exemption permit approved by this board. Their sign says they're the Hero Academy. Their fundraising uses a federal employer identification number of the Hero Labradors, which is a therapy dog training nonprofit in Texas. I'm at a complete loss as to why the county would continue to permit an organization that now does none of the things that they promised to do. Instead, they're detonating explosives and training attack dogs. Therapy dog training is not done with bombs. To be clear, I don't know what they are doing, the legal ramifications, the legal purposes behind it, but it has the appearance of being unsafe for the community, and I really wonder what happens to the veterans. I'm here tonight to ask the Board of Supervisors to look into this matter concerning standards in Article 17 of the zoning ordinance, and report findings in public hearings for the public of Caroline County. Thank you very much.
Jim, before you go, would you spell your last name, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak or public comment?
My name is Jessica Cannon Potter, and I am also from the Bowling Green District. I'm here this evening to speak about the agenda item, I believe it's I. So I'm also speaking in regard to the event, the Vimi VD Vishi event that occurred near my property on November 6th, 7th, and 8th, 2023. The Vimi VD Vishi event was held at an adjacent owner's property, which is located at 24114 Sparta Road at Milford. The Hero Cat Academy hosted the event. The flyer consisted of post-blast training, gunfire work, tracking, vehicle extractions, and muzzle fighting. From my home, I could hear and see sirens and vehicles moving along with the dogs barking, guests, vehicles, generators, and blasting. Due to the age of my home, which dates to 1852, I am very concerned that this blasting has done permanent damage to the foundation of my home, especially the two older chimneys, since explosives were used at the Vimi VD Vishi event held on November 6th, 7th, and 8th at the nearby property located just yards away at 24114 Sparta Road. Explosive events should not be held in agricultural preservation-zoned properties within yards from adjacent residential properties and/or businesses. Such training should be held at appropriately located and authorized facilities. In closing, I'd like again to say that agricultural preservation-zoned properties is not the appropriate land usage, usage language for explosive events. There is already advertising online for a forthcoming date for the same event in 2024. Thank you for your time this evening, and if allowed, I would like to give this to you.
Pass it to Mr. Parton right there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment?
My name is Joy Carter Minor. I'm from the Madison District. Good evening, Chairman Thomas.
Good evening.
And the rest of the board. First of all, I want to thank you for the video that was shown. It was actually from my YouTube page. At the time, there was a transition. The board funded the Sunday School Union some, a little over 10 years ago, to do the work that's in the foyer there and do the footage, some of the footage that you saw tonight. But what I want to say is that in the course of collecting that footage that was intended to tell the story of Union High School, there was a lot of rich data that was gathered that told more than the story of Union High School. It told the story of a proud Black American, African-American community here in Caroline County. So what I want to first thank you for supporting the project, but as we move forward, I ask that you also consider allowing us to expand beyond just telling the story of Union High School, but telling the story of a rich African-American history that included, you know, those who were pioneers in Union High School that formed this school here, but also organizations like the NAACP here in Caroline County, the Masons, the Eastern Stars. There are others who have contributed to the history here, and those stories are told inside the other footage that's available. So I just want to make sure that we give that some consideration as we move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Minor. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment?
Good evening. My name's Karen Lambert, Reedy Church District. My comments are kind of in response to some of the comments that have been made to pass a couple of meetings.
Ms. Lambert, move the mic closer to you, please. Thank you.
Thank you. In a, in a letter dated June 1st, Mr. Cully was given a FOIA request. One, one section was, I'll read it, requesting all documents relating to the noise measurements taken in connection with the Meadow Event Park from 2021 to present, including documents identifying location from which the measurements were taken, changes to the measurement location, and the devices and persons taking the measurements and the actual data collected. So like I say, that was June 1st, and then, excuse me, technical difficulties. A response was received June 16th, not from Mr. Cully, but from Mr. McKenzie, and it states, as you know, this firm serves as the county attorney for Caroline County, Virginia. On June 1st, 2023, the county received a request seeking materials and documents under the FOIA Act. Skip, skip, skip. With specific request respect to question number one, the building official stated that there is no record produced from the noise readings conducted by county staff during their onsite compliance checks, and building permits are not within the scope of the request based on the staff's conservation with you. When, when I hear things being said up there that there were no, no noise exceeding the limits, but we know there was because we witnessed it, and then there is absolutely, even though this was 2022, that the measurements were taken, there is nothing that shows anything was done or what it was. And I don't understand also why it was the county attorney returning instead of Mr. Cully. Also, I'm a little upset when my neighbor and I went to the polls. If something, if someone wants to say someone about me to someone else, introduce me and be polite and And that I'll get over it, do it while I'm present, not when I walk away. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of the public comment section? Is there anyone else who would like to speak, speak as part of public comment? Anyone else? We're hearing none. The public comments are closed. Ms. Parton, I take it you've got those notes and, and we'll double check with each other. All right. Our next agenda item is agenda item number four, which is special exception 052023, Vikstrum, Douglas, and Sharon, owner applicant.
So good evening, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, members of the board. As you know, this is a request for a special exception to allow the operation of a special events facility at 21560 Anderson Mill Road, tax parcel 64-A-29A. This is an aerial view of the 5.4 acre parcel that is approximately 1.5 miles west of the intersection of Anderson Mill Road and Sizer Road, and approximately 2/10 of a mile east of the North Anna River, which is a jurisdictional boundary between Caroline County and Hanover County. The bright yellow line on the image near the green area represents the approximate location of an approximately 2.5 acres of property that the Commonwealth of Virginia retained after the road improvements to straighten Anderson Mill Road were done in the 90s. Usually, the Commonwealth offers residual land to be split among immediate adjacent property owners, but this has not occurred today. In this image also, on the subject parcel, in orange is the entrance to the property on Anderson Mill Road, and I would note there is a significant amount of site distance in both directions there. The applicant's resident is noted in the green area, the green, the small area on the slide. The applicant's proposed venue location is the blue square on the screen there, and then the small yellow square represents the pavilion. The lighter green area in the center of the parcel there represents the proposed parking area. The river is there in the blue to the left, and then across the river and across the jurisdictional boundary is the closest residential structure, which is in Hanover County, at approximately 500 feet from the venue location. The parking area is screened from Anderson Mill Road with a row of mature cedar trees and supplemented with a row of younger cedar trees. These are trees that are noted in the image just behind the yellow line that identifies the Commonwealth property. Both parcels to the north and south are zoned RP as all of the surrounding properties are, and the property to the immediate north is vacant as is the property to the immediate This is the applicant's GDP that is sealed by a licensed engineer. It shows the proposed 3,000 square foot enclosed venue, a pavilion that is striped with a parking area for 100-plus vehicles in accordance with, in accordance with the county's space size standard of 9 by 18. The structure does have restrooms, the venue structure does have restrooms, however, because the holding tank for the restrooms does not meet the VDH code for separation from the building, the restrooms are not available for use. The applicant has provided evidence of a contract with a licensed hauler to provide restroom facilities for any events. The proposed conditions include a condition that requires the use of a licensed hauler until the holding tank receives VDH approval and a pump and haul permit from the county. The condition also requires that a drain field for the restrooms be installed within two years of starting the operation. This is a view from the driveway near the house looking down towards the proposed venue. There is an approximately a 10-foot change in elevation from the driveway down to the venue. As noted in the staff report, the venue is completely enclosed, and there is a proposed condition that requires any amplified noise to be in the enclosed venue. Also shown is the pavilion that is behind the venue. So from the top photograph, that pavilion is on the backside of the building in the top slot. The applicant previously applied for a special events facility in 2008, which was denied, 2018, I'm sorry, which was denied by the board in March of 2019. In that case, the structure that was proposed was not enclosed, and noise was a concern. The applicant has since enclosed the structure and added restrooms. The structure was built with noise-canceling measures such as six-inch-thin thick walls, extra insulation, double thermal pane windows and doors, and 12 inches of insulation in This is the view from the western edge of the proposed parking area looking east towards the venue and the house. The applicant has also had an engineer, as I noted, perform a parking calculations to verify that the space can occupy at least 100 vehicles in accordance with the standard space size on the Caroline County ordinance. And so in this image, this is the venue here, this is the house here, this is the line of cedar trees here that provides screening to Anderson Mill Road, and then this foreground here is the area that would be used for parking. This is an image of the view of the screening along Anderson Mill Road from the parking area looking towards Anderson Mill Road and a view from the driveway looking towards Anderson Mill Road from the property owned by the Commonwealth. So there again, as I noted, the screening along Anderson Mill Road here, this wood fence area is there to provide some additional screening to an area where there is a break in the larger cedar trees, but as you can see, the applicant has planted smaller, a smaller row of cedar trees in this area here. This is a kind of a more of a close-up image of that area. Anderson Mill Road is below grade at this point and just about in this area here. This is the driveway looking from the property towards Anderson Mill Road, and there again, Anderson Mill Road is below grade, and at that point right about there is where it connects to Anderson Mill Road. And as I noted, as you can see, there's sufficient site distance looking to the east and to the west.
These are your photos?
This is an aerial photograph that shows the distance from the proposed venue to the nearest residential properties in Caroline. The three closest residential structures are approximately 1,344 feet, that would be structure A, 1,360 feet would be structure B, and 1,505 feet away from the proposed venue, that would be structure C. The mature row of cedar trees previously noted are highlighted in the green here, and the residential structure is here, and this is the view from the proposed venue out towards those structures. The comprehensive plan indicates this area, designate this area as for rural residential, and the use is consistent with a special exception in our RP zoning district. Comments from the Virginia Department of Health, the applicant responded to those, noting that there would be no food preparation, catering, or cooking that would take place in the venue. Although the venue does have a kitchen, the Office of Drinking Water had been contacted and provided samples and stated that there would be no issues, that there were no issues with the samples received, and that the applicant indicated that a two-year timeframe would be sufficient for installation of a drain field to serve the restrooms that are in the facility. And there's a recent special exception for venue that also had a similar condition for time of installing a drain field. Staff has provided suggested conditions for the facility, and they are that the two would be recorded within 30 days of approval, all amplified noise would be contained within an enclosed structure, noise shall comply with the noise ordinance located in Chapter 68 of the Carolina County Code, the special exception would not be transferable, the special exception shall be limited to the operation of special events facilities for weddings, receptions, birthday parties, and similar receptions. There should be no parking permitted outside of the area identified on the GDP. The hours of operation would be Friday 3 to 10:00 p.m., on Saturday 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and on Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There should be a one-year review of the special exception by the board. Trash is to, the trash areas are to be screened from view of neighboring properties and disposed of properly. Exterior lighting used shall be sourced shielded downward. The applicant shall ensure that an ABC, a valid ABC license is obtained for events that would serve alcohol. The conditions also say that there should be at least one security person for every 100 attendees. Events shall be limited to guests of no more than 160, which 160 persons is the maximum occupancy of the facility. There's also a condition that notes that access from the North Anna River from the venue shall be prohibited, and a drain field should be installed within two years of beginning the operation. There have been several letters and opposition submitted related to this case that were included in your packet from both owners in Caroline and Hanover and nearby residents. The Planning Commission on September 28th recommended denial of the request as there were concerns about noise associated with the venue in the close proximity to the property, the rear property line. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here and may have words as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Does any board member have questions of Mr. Hughes at this time?
Not yet.
If there are no questions, I'll open the public hearing and give the applicant a chance to make his presentation. Thank you, sir. We'll declare the public hearing for special exception 052023 to be opened.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Robert Barlow. I'm an attorney from Fredericksburg. Well, I live in Fredericksburg. I lived in King George County for over 30 years, but my office is in, near Fredericksburg. And I represent the applicants, Sharon and Douglas Vikstrum, and I'm here to ask the board, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, to approve the request, the special exception for it. As Mr. Hughes stated, my clients applied for the special exception in 2018. It was denied at that time out of concern for noise, because at that time, that, that event center, the pavilion, if you will, was an open-air event center. And since then, they've enclosed it, as the photograph showed, insulated it for noise, as Mr. Hughes stated, all while, of course, pulling the necessary building permits and having the necessary inspections by the county building officials to make sure it's in compliance and makes, make sure it serves the, the county's needs and their needs as As Mr. Hughes noted, the facility is, is designed and intended for a maximum of 160 guests or attendants. The parking is for approximately 100 spaces. As, as I met with staff last week, they made it clear, they understood that people coming to a wedding usually come in couples, small groups, not just everybody bringing their own car. I note that in your package, that agency and department comments on the applications, the building official approved it, the sheriff's office, the sheriff approved it on, on the county form, the economic development office approved it, Fort AP Hill approved it, and the fire and rescue official noted that they had no issues or no concerns with, with the application. I know that noise has always been a concern, and it was a concern before the planning commission, or it came up here tonight. And since the planning commission meeting, my clients have taken it upon themselves to test the facility for noise. Now, I'll note that during Mr. Hughes's presentation and the conditions that the staff is recommending, my client agrees to comply with all of the conditions requested by the county staff. However, I wanted to be clear that the very first condition was that amplified noise be contained in the structure. And I know that, but there was also a condition that, that the facility comply with the county noise ordinance. Now, the county noise ordinance allows no more than 60 decibels to leave the property. And I wanted to be clear that the, any amplified noise would be sourced in the facility indoors, inside the insulated facility, but I can't promise anybody that no noise will be heard outside. However, I think I can promise that no, that the decibels will be within the county ordinance. I have a, a, a one-page report where my clients had a, a local DJ who's well-known, well-regarded for playing events, come to the facility some, some time ago, a week or two ago, and installed his system and played his system inside the facility at 109 decibels, measured at 109 decibels inside the venue. That's more than enough for any, anybody. But outside the venue, with the doors closed, directly outside the door was 70, was 75 decibels. And then, but, but at the property line, the nearest property line, near the driveway and near the river, it was 50 decibels or less. So the nearest, at the nearest property lines were well below the county requirement. And I have copies of this to hand up if the board would like to take a look at them at its leisure.
Give them to Ms. Parton.
Each of the board members? The county, when I met with, with staff last week, I mean, the county staff noted that the, they had concerns with, and, and some of the neighboring property owners had concerns with potential guests accessing the river, accessing the property. And as the staff noted, and as I've seen for myself, the Vikstrums have installed fencing that blocks any paths that would lead toward the river, that would lead toward any neighboring property owners, and so they've, they've dealt with that, that issue. As far as issues about the restrooms and the tanks being too close to the building, I know that staff has indicated that, that drain fields would be installed within two years, and that's fine, that there are other means for dealing with wastewater in the meantime, and the restrooms, I've seen, aren't, aren't going to be used at all until, until the Virginia Department of Health approved, with the tanks properly located and permitted. I also note, as Mr. Hughes did, that as you approach the venue from the street, you can barely see it. Anderson Mill Road is below grade, and then you go up a grade a little bit onto the property, and then down a grade toward the venue, and the venue is so low on the property that the grading between Anderson Mill Road and the venue provides itself a substantial visual and sound barrier, so that you'd hardly notice the property, the facility was there. As the staff report notes, the application is consistent with the, the comprehensive plan. As a matter of fact, it's my understanding that the board, this board has approved the Magnolia Fields event venue, which is on Anderson Mill Road, about three miles away. It's not a problem, and about six other additional event venues in the rural preservation zone, as well as the Amazon Database Center, I believe, my understanding is, has been approved. And that the application, as the staff notes, the application itself is consistent with the, the comprehensive plan and meets the standard. the comprehensive plan and meets the standards for approval. The Vikstrums, the staff also noted that the Vikstrums have complied with a request to let the natural vegetation grow back in places to provide natural barriers and natural erosion control, as staff had requested. And I would also note that while we are aware of some folks that don't approve or don't want to see this venue approved, and I've seen some of the materials handed around the community, my clients, and some of the opposition has sought petitions, signed petitions opposing the application. But my clients have received sixty signatures of residents and homeowners on Anderson Mill Road in support, seventy-five other signatures of Caroline County residents in support, and then at least a hundred electronic signatures on a website support page, if you will, of people in the county, mostly in the county. I can't say that every one of them is in the county, but their zip codes are indicated in support. And I have here to hand up six copies, paper clipped, of the petition with the sixty on Anderson Mill Road, the seventy-five on Caroline County, and the hundred electronic signatures for your consideration. As I said before, the county staff report does say that the standards of review for special exceptions permit, their opinion is that this application does comply with the standards the county set. And I, if the board, Mr. Chairman, if you or the board have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. We're going to continue with the public hearing, and then we will probably bring you back for questions. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Sadler, if you'll set us up for citizen comments, please. At this time, we'll ask anyone who would like to speak regarding the special exception, if they would come forward.
My name is Stuart Sullivan. I'm from Hanover. I am a property owner in Caroline County in the Reedy District. I don't vote in Caroline County. My concern with this goes back to two thousand and nineteen, when this board turned this down. At that time, I learned the property directly across from me was not the property of the Vikstrums, that they'd been using it for years. They cut a road across my neighbor's property to gain access to the river. That was in two thousand and nineteen. That's the first time I knew that. I was pretty upset with that because I don't believe in trespass, and I don't believe in going on other people's property and doing stuff. This is documented by your county. That kind of gave me concerns from the get-go. And since this last application, before this application came about, the Vikstrums got a violation. They were conducting weddings that they've admitted to and events which they've admitted to without permit, but said they were free. Therefore, there were no fine issues, but they were told to stop doing it. Then a few months, well, maybe not even a month later, they applied for this permit. When I get this application, I discover right away by reading the Papahannock Area Report, the Health Department Report, they've installed a drain field system with no permits. They put in bathrooms. They've had weddings there and events, so those bathrooms were used more than likely, unless they have receipts for porta-potties, because even in free events, you use the bathrooms. Then on top of that, they have wedding pictures still up right now on the river on Master Polo's property. Mr. Master Polo couldn't be here tonight to speak, but he did send you a letter detailing all of that. So they have violations on that. On top of that tonight, Mr. Hughes mentions a three thousand square foot wedding venue. Well, they have a building permit or kitchen, a commercial kitchen. If you look at the square footage on that building permit, it's fourteen hundred and forty-eight, I believe forty-eight square foot, I might be, but it's less than half of what they're saying they're using. My problem with all of this, as I believe was the problem with the zoning board, was trust. This is a special exemption with special clauses and things that are supposed to be happened. We've got a track record of trespassing on your neighbor's property. Even though you put a fence up, you're still advertising, and you can look it up, it's on, I saw, there's a Facebook page, and there's also a website. With those type of things, that's what we, when you're doing a special exemption, we're scared. I have property values issues. I have liability issues. I have a cliff down on that river. It's thirty feet above that river, and my insurance agent keeps telling me it's an attractive nuisance. I don't know what an attractive nuisance is, but that's what he tells me, and that's why he wants to raise my rate on my insurance, because I have an attractive nuisance. Well, everybody on the river has an attractive nuisance. My neighbor lives right across. She's at the same elevation as the Vikstrums' property. You can hear everything in the winter time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this special exception?
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Sullivan, Stuart's wife. I just wanted to add to that. I'm further questioning the integrity of this proposed special events facility in addition to what my husband spoke about. I want to quickly touch on some social media sites and website Anderson Mill Estates has up right now. I was made aware of the social media accounts and their Anderson Mill Estates website in February this year, when it came up again after the, got turned down in March two thousand and nineteen. I've written several letters to the Zoning Board of Appeals when they were called in for a violation, and again, the planning commission when it was turned down this past August. I'm wondering, how can you advertise hosting a wedding venue when you don't have a legal permit to even have a wedding? Their official Anderson Mill Estates website, on the homepage alone, you have four opportunities to click on the book now button for your wedding. You can further read about all the accommodations and features their venue offers, including a full kitchen and three bathrooms, not approved for a bride's use during her special day. If you go to their Facebook page, you can see an offer for five hundred dollars off the first three bookings in two thousand and twenty-three. It's still posted, hasn't been taken down, as well as an offer for taking sunset photos by the water, the river, which they don't have property on. It would be their neighbor's property where they're showing the picture, taken last, I believe, October, the wedding from last year. I haven't looked lately, but as late as August of this year, their daughter Carla Crisp, who's a wedding planner, advertised their wedding venue on a Facebook post for Virginia Bridalneck Network. Why are these posts still up? It hasn't been approved. Why is the website live? They don't have a permit to operate. How can they promote their venue? The Federal Trade Commission has determined that a representation, omission, or practice is deceptive, if it's likely to mislead consumers or affect consumers' behavior or decision about the product or service. Their website and social media sites are certainly misleading at the very least. A bride reading them would think that they could actually click on that book now button and book the venue. All of this points back to the integrity of the owners of this property not following the laws and rules before moving ahead with their project and their agenda. Why should they be allowed a permit when they clearly haven't abided by the laws to date? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this special exception?
My name is Jerry Cook. I'm living in Rico County, and my association with the Vikstrums, I met them about nineteen years ago when I moved to the Commonwealth. And part of my responsibility in my move was that I helped oversee and coordinate a number of home Bible fellowships in the area, and that's how I met them. Over the years, they have graciously hosted a number of things that we have done at their home, and as a group, we're people who work very hard to leave things better than we found them. But those events, as nearly as I could figure over the nineteen years, there are about thirty-five different things that we have, that they have graciously hosted. I've coordinated some of them, and other people have, and sometimes I've just participated. But during that time, one thing I've always been impressed with is their quality of life. Number one, they love God, they love their family, they love their community, love their country, and they are living in a place that they are not going to do something to harm that. Their home is very tidy, they've made improvements on their property over the years, that I've seen, and it is more beautiful today than it was the first time I saw it nineteen years ago. But I have all confidence that they will take care of things and represent Caroline County very well, that it'll be, any event that's held there, if that's approved, people will look back on that fondly, and they will remember where it happened, and they will have great memories of Caroline County and the way that they were treated here. So I thank you for your consideration. I thank, thank you for listening, and I am in full support of them being able to proceed with this venue and being able to provide that wonderful service to people who have a need for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening. God bless you. My name is Bill Berryhill. I live in Goochlin County and have property also in Hanover County as well. And I have known Doug and Sharon Vikstrum. I first met them in nineteen seventy-seven, so we've been associated for quite a long time. And in my opinion is that they're mighty fine folks. They're honest, they're hardworking, they love to give and to serve and to help people. And I think that really is a big part of the venue that they want to do. They want to make available a place where people can meet, people can do different events and things. I know sometimes meeting places can be kind of hard to round up at different times. We've, we've tried to find event locations at times for family things, and it can be a little bit of a search. But I think that this venue could be, really be a blessing for people, the people of Beaver Dam, the people of Caroline County, that they could have a nice place to meet and to bring their family or their friends or whatever it is that they would like to meet about. And I think that really is Doug and Sharon's heart, that they would, they really enjoy serving people and helping people, and that that is what they would do with this, with this venue if it's approved. So my thinking is, I've heard that over a couple of hundred people in the surrounding community have signed off that they are fine with it, and that, and I think it would just be a great blessing to everyone concerned. So my opinion. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I would really like to see this approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, board, my name is Scott Clark, and I'm a resident of in Rico County. My wife and I retired in the summer of two thousand and nineteen and moved here to the Commonwealth from Kansas to be close to our daughter and her family. I was a district manager in the Hutchinson Social Security Office, and my wife, a cosmetologist and a concierge with the Kansas Masonic Home, and we've also served as ministers for over forty years. We've learned through the years by coordinating and planning numerous wedding retirements and larger family events, the value of a venue that can host a modestly sized gathering in a magnificent rural setting. It is relaxing and inspiring to have a rural venue to bring together family and friends outside of the hustle and bustle of everyday life. This is what we believe Doug and Sharon Vikstrum can and will provide with their venue, all the while protecting and maintaining the rural character of Caroline County and the conservation of its natural resources. In the fall of two thousand and nineteen, following our retirement and subsequent move to the Commonwealth, my wife and I volunteered for and participated in our church planning meetings for upcoming activities for the holiday season into the first quarter of two thousand and twenty. This is where we first met and worked with Doug and Sharon. Right away, we observed their sincere concern and interest in the details of each activity and event. Genuinely, they give themselves to hospitality. We continue to serve together in different church meetings and events. Doug and Sharon have demonstrated a real brotherly care in the implementation of the directives we've been given and their responsibilities. And I'd like to say I highly recommend this board consider and approve their application for this special exceptions permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Casey Pew, and I live in, on Anderson Mill Road.
Ma'am, can you pull the mic down a little bit?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. David, you start over.
Okay. My name is Casey Pew, and I am in the Western Caroline Voting District. I stand before you today to advocate for the approval of an event venue in our county, a decision that holds the potential to bring numerous benefits to our community in fostering the growth and prosperity of our region. The establishment of an event venue is not just a luxury, but a strategic investment in our collective future. Anderson Mill Estate venue holds great history within Caroline County. It offers a much different vibe than other surrounding venues. An event venue would serve as a hub for community engagement, providing a space for residents to celebrate milestones, organize gatherings, and foster a sense of togetherness. This sense of community is invaluable, contributing to the overall well-being of our citizens. The economic advantages cannot be overlooked. Hosting events attracts visitors from neighboring, neighboring areas, boosting local businesses and creating job opportunities. Restaurants, hotels, and various service providers all stand to benefit from the influx of patrons attending events in our county. This not only enhances our economic landscape, but also positions us as a vibrant and welcoming destination. I understand the concerns regarding potential disruption to the peacefulness of our area. However, Anderson Mill Estates is dedicated to implementing measures that address such worries. Traffic management, soundproofing measures, and respectful scheduling will be implemental parts of the operation to maintain harmony with our surroundings. Additionally, the revenue generated from event activities can be reinvested in the local infrastructure, public services, and community programs. This ensures that benefits of the venue extend beyond its physical boundaries, positively impacting the broader community. In conclusion, the approval of another event venue in our county is a pivotal step towards a more vibrant, connected, and economically robust future. It is an investment in community, culture, and prosperity that will leave a lasting legacy for generations to come. I urge the Board of Supervisors to consider the long- I urge the Board of Supervisors to consider the long-term benefits and endorse the establishment of this much-needed venue for the betterment of our beloved county. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. My name is Carla Crisp, and I am a Hanover County resident. I live 2.6 miles from the proposed venue, and I am also the owner of Petals and Lace Events. I am also a graduate of Caroline High School, class of 2004. I have been in business for almost 10 years and plan about 25 weddings a year. Caroline County currently has 10 working wedding venues within the area, and I have had the privilege to work at four of them, as well as to host weddings on private properties throughout Caroline County. I won a national award last year for a wedding planned at one of these venues, and I was very glad to bring this back home. My goal is to be able to run Anderson Mill Estates just like the other venues. I have wedding experience, I understand the rules most venues are under, and strive to provide excellent service as shown by my many positive reviews. We are looking to bring a fresh and unique experience to couples and create unforgettable memories. I received the opposition notice and would like to just make a few points. Traffic congestion was the term used, and if anything, like the events today with 95, that was traffic all over the roads. We had three times the amount on the backroads, and not one person called and complained to anyone about it. Guests do not arrive at the same time, nor do they leave at the same time. It's a much more gradual timeframe, and that does not interfere with normal traffic. Anderson Mill Road is a high-traffic road in general. It is also now connected to Ladysmith Road with the changes made, and it is a continuous road since the stop sign has removed. This is where another venue is located, and again, no one has complained about traffic issues during any events. I am not a sound professional by any means, but I did hire a professional DJ to come in and play multiple musical sets. He played at the known level that I would have at any other venue, and again, not one person called and complained. The concern with alcohol was also brought up, and again, we have another venue within miles of this location, and there have been no issues, no alcohol-related accidents, nothing has been reported. Caroline has, again, 10 active wedding venues, and most of them are on windy backroads. It is Caroline County. Alcohol consumption at these events has not been a problem. My job, the venue's job, catering and bartenders, is to ensure that no one is ever overserved and that people stay safe. We can show that we have our neighbor and community support by the numerous signatures in front of you, and now we are asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening. My name is James Toler. I am a resident, currently a resident of Henrico County. I've known Doug and Sharon for 33 years. My first interaction with them, I was 15, and they gave me, gave me the opportunity to help out at a friend's wedding, DJing, the crazy, small set of speakers and no knowledge whatsoever. But in the entire time I've known Doug and Sharon, I've been amazed by their hearts to give, to help people, especially young people, in learning and growing. They are very giving, they're very caring people, they care about their neighbors. I've met many of their neighbors at the many events I've been to over the years at their home, just family get-togethers, just great time to be together. And I encourage you to accept the proposal before you, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity to speak publicly on behalf of someone. We very rarely get to speak in favor of those that we know, and it's a great opportunity to do that in front of this board. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter?
My name's John Apperson. I'm of Caroline County, rural district. One thing I ask y'all to do is to take and give them a chance. Everybody's gave y'all a chance on doing, that's why y'all where y'all are. Give them a chance and see what they can do. They're teaching the young over county to take and be business people, how to interact with other people, helping people on their weddings and all. You know, that's the day in your life that you always remember. I know y'all remember all y'all's wedding day. Let it be an experience for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter?
Hello, my name is Sarah Musavi. I'm a Hanover resident. I live 500 feet across the river from the Vixtrums. I moved back, I moved to the house back in January of this year, and if I knew that there was a venue or an event or any sort of establishment across the river from me, I would have not purchased this home. I am very distraught that this is even a thing. My neighbors have said wonderful pieces about our points on this matter. I would like to say that I do have two young children. We are very upset about the potential noise and traffic in a business that would be open to 10 o'clock on weekends. We go to bed very early, and the elevation that you all have mentioned, if you all have been there, it's a cove, basically. You saw that.
You don't stay close to them.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It creates a basin, so all the noise, car doors, music, people talking, it does echo. So while the people on Anderson Mill Road might not see or hear this, me and my children will, and so will the Sullivans who are behind me 800, 900 feet from them. I please hope that you consider, though we are in Hanover County, that not everyone will benefit from this, and while they are saying that this will create revenue and community and whatnot, this is a very expensive business that most people will never look up, let alone know it even exists, except for the people who are truly impacted by it every weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening. Kevin Collins, Reedy Church District. I have no dog in this fight. I am for landowners utilizing their land as they see fit, but I am also for following the guidelines that the county has set forth in the comprehensive plan. I too am battling an unwanted project in my area. I live on the North Anna River, so I understand both sides of the coin here. We, as residents who purchased in rural preservation in Caroline County, did our homework and did our research. We understand that these areas are defined for their specific characteristics, rural preservation. I spent a lot of time and a lot of research in picking where I wanted to live, and that's on the North Anna River. It is pristine, it is beautiful, it is quiet. And I can't blame people for being surprised when projects like this pop up, especially when there are violations or concerns that neighbors are expressing, and sometimes they fall on deaf ears. I can't say that this is the case here. Again, I have no dog in the fight. I am south of this property, it will not impact me, but decisions like this need to be looked at fully. And I mean, to the extent that we realize, these are big investments people make. Riverfront property is not cheap. We didn't buy this because we wanted to turn it into a wedding venue or a data center or a convenience store. We bought it because we want a rural, quiet area. If I wanted all of this development along the North Anna Corridor that we're seeing right now, and the applications that are being put in for this type of work and development, we would have never purchased in these areas. And to just pick and choose who gets what along the areas and what land we decide to change over is not right. So again, I understand both sides here. We want to be able to do what we want as landowners, but you also have to follow the rules. Agricultural preservation, rural preservation, planned unit development, it's all there for a reason. And if we continued with this haphazard changing of comprehensive plans and rezoning willy-nilly, the county's going to look like Northern Virginia or, you know, an area that we didn't move here for that. This is why we chose Caroline, and I think a lot of people on this board have forgotten that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter? Anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter? Anyone else? Hearing none? Public hearing is declared closed. Board members at this time have any questions of the applicant or of staff? Mr. Underwood?
Applicant or staff? He's applicant to stand up.
Applicant. I just have about four, four areas that I'd like to just kind of discuss.
Yes, sir.
That were mentioned. Number one, the restroom issue and the events that have taken place, can you address those?
Yes, certainly, sir. The, the restrooms, first of all, I would tell the, I would tell the board unequivocally that the three restrooms in question have never been used by any person, that they are installed, just like the kitchen is installed but not permitted to be used, so it hasn't been used.
You have evidence that they were porta potties or something else brought to the venue to, for guests to use or?
I honestly did not come prepared to show evidence of porta potties. I didn't know that, but let me just say this about quote-unquote the event.
I just want to make sure we, were there ample facilities for the guests, and if so, what was done?
Yes, and I, and I, if I can come right back to that, but let me just say this about the quote-unquote the events.
I'd rather go back to the restrooms first.
Okay.
I don't want to skirt the issue.
No, and I don't.
I'll come back to issue, events later.
The event, and it was one event, was a family friend, very small, limited event, if you will, a wedding.
I just, I just want to get to the question of.
So what did you do?
What facilities were used by the guests while they were there since restrooms?
Were used.
Excuse me?
The bathrooms were used because when we.
But he says unequivocally, no, but just, so I'm trying to get to how, how.
We didn't discuss this. Were they used or were they not used? We are, we are contracted with a porta potty system, Mo Johns, out of, what is it, Cumberland County. We are contracted.
Ma'am, ma'am, could you get a little closer to the mic? I'm sorry, we're having mic issues.
First of all, we installed the bathrooms during COVID, and we could not, nobody was working. We did not know that for a pump and haul that you needed a permit because the Charlesburg, what is it?
Ballfield.
Ballfield had pump and haul.
For years.
Years and years. So we installed them ignorantly, not knowing, and as I said, COVID was going on.
Okay, I understand. So you installed the restrooms with the misunderstanding that they could be used?
Yeah, that's correct, yes. They were used, yeah.
Yes, okay, so he's wrong, okay.
Yes.
All right. So I just, pretty much, okay.
I apologize, Mr. Underwood, it was my misunderstanding.
That's okay.
Of what I've been.
I'll go on to item number two for me. The issue of cutting through the property and trespassing through Mr. Mastopolos' property.
Well, there was no, I will say this, that my understanding is there was no trespassing, that the Vixtrums had an agreement or an understanding with Mr. Mastopolos to use, to cross his property to the river, and I believe it was a misunderstanding that led to the path, if you will, that led to the river and any disturbance along the way. And since, as I said in my opening, that the Vixtrums have discontinued that and allowed the vegetation to regrow naturally to remediate the disturbance.
So once, once the issue was cleared up, then you stopped using access to the property and let it regrow back to its natural state?
Yes, it's go.
What you're saying, is that right, Mr. Mastopol, Mr. Vixter?
Yes. I've been in this home for 40 years, just to let you know, I've been in the county for 40. And I did move out here for a contract, but anyway, when Mike Mastopolos bought that property, he told me that I had rights to use that property to do what I wanted to do. If I had to cut a tree down, I'd ask him, but I've never cut a tree down, and I've cleaned up a lot of dead trees, and we actually turned that beach into something that was beautiful. Now, if you go down there now, since we haven't been there for a year, it looks pretty trashy. It's grown up, it's got debris on it, and that's just the way it's going to be.
So, so your position is you had permission to use the access to the beach area, is that correct?
Yes, he gave me, and we, we used to bush hog his, half of, a couple of his acres of his property, so he could go down there, and he never complained, never said I was doing anything wrong until we applied for this venue.
Your position is you had an understanding that you could access the property?
Yeah, he even gave it to us in writing.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
My understanding is, my understanding is that his written permission is in the package.
There's a letter.
Then, because, because it was mentioned tonight that there wasn't, so I wanted, I wanted him to get it on record that he has permission and it was given, so that could be a statement that's not fact.
That's true.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I'm asking the questions that I had question, had issue with. Fourthly, the number of violations that have occurred that.
Now, if I can address the violation, there was a notice of violation, a letter sent to the Vixtrums dated, I believe it was March 5th, 2023, concerning a wedding. So, well, staff was, staff was alerted that quote-unquote weddings were occurring on the property. And I, I think after investigation, and they saw, they had some concerns, and so they issued a notice of violation, which was appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And after the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing, in, with the Vixtrums, working with the staff, Mr. Hughes issued a May 17th letter.
I think I have that.
Which you should have in your packet, and it, and it says, "The letter amends and supersedes staff's previous letter, previous letter dated March 5th, 2023." And they found, the, the office had determined that the property is in compliance with the, with the zoning ordinance. And I will say this, that the, the issue, as I was starting to say a few minutes ago, was that they held one wedding there on the property. It was a family friend. It wasn't for, they didn't charge money, if you will. It was somebody who wanted to get married, somebody who loved the Vixtums' property and said, "Can we get married at your property?" So they're not using it as an event center or event facility. However, as I pointed out to the Board of Zoning Appeals, if their use of that property for one wedding event is a violation as a special event without a permit, if you will, then every time any of us in this county have a, a child, a grandchild's birthday party in our living room, or any other kind of special event as the, as the ordinance reads, without a special exception, exception permit, if we're in the rural preservation district, we would be technically in violation, and it, we know it doesn't mean that. So it's one, a one event, some of the, the people who complained suspected there were other events, but there's no evidence of any other events, and that's why the staff revised their, their report to note that the property is in compliance and that the, the appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals was unnecessary. And that was resolved, although I admit, I acknowledge that there's a, a paper trail, if you will, that makes it appear that there were, that there were violations, that they were found in violation. But those misconceptions, those misunderstandings were, were clarified and corrected through the Board of Zoning Appeals process and working with the, the Planning Commission staff.
Thank you, sir. I have no more questions. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Vixter.
That's all for me, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Long?
I do have some questions. I can't hear myself, so I doubt you can hear me. The, I wanted to clarify on the access to the river. My understanding was at first that you were given permission for your family to be able to walk down to the river, what, 16 years ago, before you all started all this? And that privilege was pulled back by your neighbor at the first application, due to the fact that you had not just walked down to the river, but you had established. at the first application due to the fact that you had not just walked down to the river, but you had established a road and a break in the gate. I personally, from the other side of the river, saw, uh, I don't know if it was like a four wheeler thing coming down the bank onto the beach. And of course, all of that is an RPA area. That did not sit well for, for me on that. Also, you know, you're planning on applying, but yet you, you don't get permits for installing, uh, the restrooms. I would think you would know that you need permits for, for that type of thing. And then I have one other little question. Do you have, you have a daughter, correct?
Aye.
This bothered me the last time you came up here to apply because your daughter came up and spoke as a wedding coordinator. But you never introduced her as your daughter and she, you know, she has a, she has a stance in this, but yet she was, she's coming up and, and speaking as a wedding coordinator, which I'm sure she will be if you get this permit on your property.
I am already.
Right. Right. But my, my point here.
Appreciate it.
My point here is I'm hearing what you want me to hear, but I'm reading different facts. I appreciate that you didn't close the, the building because I saw it on your first application. But it bothers me terribly that when it comes to getting this, this permit, that you have, have cut corners and skim things. Obviously, you're still using the facility. You're, you're doing charitable work with the church. They said you've had like 30 things over there. You know, so.
Thirty things in eighteen, eighteen years. There was nothing there when we first started.
But the point is you cannot keep cutting corners and that mistrust is really bothering me.
Ms. Long, ma'am, if I may, you know, I, I had the same question about when their daughter was here talking and of course I can't talk for her. And they can't speak for her and I, but I know, I was surprised she didn't introduce herself as your dau, her, as their daughter, but she's speaking for herself. She's not speaking.
She's an adult. She certainly can speak for herself.
Yes, she does, but, but we can't be held responsible for what she says or doesn't say or whether, how she identifies herself. And I apologize for that, uh, because I would have expected her to identify herself as their daughter. But why she didn't, I don't know. I don't think, I, I would have said so if I was concerned.
That's not relevant, Mr. Barlow, and you don't have to explain any further. Thank you.
I would also, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just say one other thing is that the Vikstroms, contrary to what was said, uh, by one individual in opposition, the Vikstroms do own property on the river. They do have some, part of their, their, their acreage does have riverfront. And so while there was a misunderstanding with the use of Mr. Mastopolos' riverfront, they do have the possibility of accessing their own riverfront for their own purposes, although they've, they've, they've fenced off the riverfront area from this facility. Probably not.
Okay. Mr. Forehand, I believe you had a question.
Just one quick one. Um, if we were to grant this and you were to pursue the, the septic field, where would you put? Is there a prospective location for that?
Yes, we had an engineer come out. It works in the county, Rodney, and he started doing a design, which, you know, costs thousands of dollars. So we backed off before that. And to address the bathrooms, they were on the drawings that I submitted with the county underneath the multipurpose is what I called it. And Kevin, when he, Kevin Whitman, when he comes out, he did all my inspections. He looked at everything. He didn't say anything wrong with them. And so I wasn't hiding anything and it was on the set of plans.
I was just looking at if, if, if it's actually perked and is, is it, is it going to be, take away some of your parking?
No, it'll be down in the back is what he was thinking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Black, this is the Western Carolina District. We're going to give you the last word.
Mr. Hughes?
I got a, a couple of questions. First of all, you know, I'm big on the Planning Commission's decisions and how they went. They went five to one against this. Can you give me a reason why that five to one happened? What was their thinking and their thought process?
So the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission expressed concerns about noise. And they raised some concerns about prior activities related to other business ventures.
That was, that was, those are the two things?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Uh, another thing on this application I saw, it said, um, it said a hundred plus vehicles. It was in a couple of spots and it said a hundred plus vehicles. A hundred plus could be 200, 300, 400. Is there a max on the vehicle? Or is it, because I saw a hundred, then I see a hundred plus. What is the total number of vehicles?
So the engineer did a design that would accommodate a hundred, I think it was 110 vehicles.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, 110 vehicles is what he is on his drawing that he submitted as part of the GDP. At the nine by 18 space requirement, which is our standard space size.
Okay. Um, Mrs. Vikstrom, you had, um, do you not, in your house, do you not have a commercial kitchen? Because I saw something where food would not be prepared. Did you not get a license for a commercial kitchen at some time?
In my house?
Yes.
And, no, I don't have a.
No, no, you're not. Okay. I thought you had Kevin out there for a commercial.
I have a license for the kitchen in the venue.
But the, the, so will there be, but it says here that your food will not be served there then, correct?
Um, it says food will not be prepared there.
Food will not be prepared. Yeah, food will not be prepared there.
You can bring in your own caterer.
Okay. Mr. Hughes, can I get you again? Can you give me a little background on what's going on with the whole, uh, drain field and the, the pump and haul and what's going on there and what fines were issued and?
No, so the applicant installed the restrooms and they put in a tank, holding tank. The VDH went out, inspected the holding tank and found that it was not in compliance with the regulations. Cited them, you know, saying, hey, this holding tank has been installed, but it's not in accordance with the regulations. So.
Can you move the mic around?
So this holding tank was found not to be in compliance. And so they were told that they could not use that holding tank until, one, it met the VDH requirements. And two, in a county, we have to have a pump and haul permit. Because according to the VDH, when they use a holding tank as they have designed, that would be considered a pump and haul. And so if at some point if they relocated the tank to meet the distance requirements and it could be permitted by VDH, they would still have to come to the county and be issued a pump and haul permit.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for now.
We're ready for you.
Oh. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I would like to say if, if the board has any inclination to disapprove, I wanted to invite, take the opportunity to invite the members of the board to come out and see the facility and, and judge themselves what's there and, and, and how the, it would benefit the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Black?
This is obviously, uh, this is probably one of the hardest votes I've ever had. And, um, I want to go over a couple of things because back in 2018, I was a major, or 2019, I was a major proponent of this project. And I think the Planning Commission at that time, I don't know, Mr. Finch, I think the Planning Commission actually approved it in 2019. And then the Board of Supervisors rejected it. Um, I'm pretty sure that's how the, the vote went. And when I look at some of the, uh, when I look at some of the opposition letters, a, a lot of that stuff that I see that is, the opposition is, is to me horse crap. The, the whole idea of the, the drinking, well, there's, there was a winery for a while on Lady Smith Road. We have a wedding venue currently on Lady Smith Road that, that has the, that, so that to me is not, that to me is not the issue. The traffic, uh, there's a wedding venue there on Lady Smith Road. There was traffic at the winery. So that to me, once again, is not the issue. The, the noise, uh, I think the Vikstroms, I think you've done a great job with, with what you've done with the noise. My biggest concern in this whole thing is following the rule of law. And my concern was in 2018, 2019, I was completely for this thing, completely for this thing. But it got rejected. And there I'm seeing advertisements for it on Facebook and $500 off. And I, I can't support that because we have zoning rules and although I agree with my fellow members, disagree with my fellow members, that this should have happened, that this wedding venue should have happened, their, their decision was no. I didn't like that decision. Flat out didn't like that decision. And I still don't like this decision and I still want you to have your wedding venue. However, I can't, I feel like I have picked on Virginia Sports Complex for not doing the right thing. We have something going on right now with Leashes of Valor or something, not doing the right thing. I feel like I would be a hypocrite if I approved something where I feel like people weren't doing the right thing. If we're advertising for a wedding venue that's not supposed to be there, I again, good conscience, cannot, cannot agree to it at this time. Now, am I saying I don't want you to have it? I do want you to have it. But I want you to have it the right way where we come back and we say, hey, look, we've done everything the right way. We've got the drain field fixed and we're not doing anything there. And no, you can't prove 100% I agree. If you're having a thing at your, your property, you have every right to do that. Birthday party, whatever the case may be. You have every right to have that on your property. And so when people call me or send me a message, they're having something on their property, yeah, they have a right to do that. However, if you are advertising for $500 off, if you book something, that tells me it's not just a family thing. You're not going to charge your family $500. And I know this is hard because I'm personal friends with the Vikstroms. I know that's a difficult thing. But I don't, I mean, I, I cannot, I cannot approve something that where I feel like, as Ms. Long said, corners have been cut and we're, we're, we're doing it before the county has given permission anyway. And so that's, that's been, and it's put me, I feel like it's put me in a very, very tough situation as a supervisor. So at this time, I'm going to make the motion for denial.
You're second to the motion.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mike. The motion is made by Mr. Black and seconded by Mrs. Long to deny special exception 052023. Discussion on the motion? Comments, discussion. There were two comments made that I wrote. Um, one was, someone said that it was better now than when they found it. And I'm, I'm a person who really believe in property rights and and the other gentleman from Henrico, I believe, that, um, he was 15 and, uh, give him a chance. And, and I pondered and have we given them a chance? And some of you are shaking your head yes and some are saying no. I'm a guy who, I'm a law abiding citizen most of the time. But when I get behind my, in my vehicle, I kind of like to ride around 78 to 83. But I think I'm a pretty good fellow most of the time. Was looking for the sheriff yet. I think I'm a pretty good fellow most of the time. And I have gotten speeding tickets and I've, I've, I've asked for leniency to go to driving school. And this is very difficult for me. Um, I think you're wonderful people. I think you've got people supporting you. I'm not sure if there's a way that we can ensure that all the violations and the issues are, are taken care of and corrected. But if so, I'd like to take a look at it. Um, what we would have to do to, to make sure that the venue meets all the permits and all the violations that they have occurred, don't occur again, and the incursions on people's, people's properties, the misunderstanding about, all those things are cleared up, then I, I'm, I'm leaning toward giving them a chance. That's my comment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, we'll call the question, uh, the motion was made by Mr. Black, seconded by Mrs. Long to deny special exception 052023. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose nay?
Nay.
Chair of the Text Division in the House, Mr. Forehand, how do you vote?
Aye.
Forehand votes aye. Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Black votes aye. Mr. Sealy?
Aye.
Mr. Sealy votes aye. Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Long votes aye. Mr. Underwood?
Nay.
Mr. Underwood votes nay and I vote aye. So the motion to deny passes five to one. And you'll have an opportunity to reapply after those things, Mr., uh, Underwood addressed. Mr. Hughes, we'll move to text amendment 18, 19, and 20. And these are all just language where we insert the words as subject to the standards contained in each one of these different zoning classes. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. And one thing I would, would add is that where in your packet it notes a capital S in standards, that that should be a small s. So that applies to all of the standards and there's not any confusion.
Yes.
Relative to the language in the ordinance.
Of now?
Yeah.
Sure.
Just good to say.
Mr. Sealy has a question right now, so we're going to address his question.
I noticed that we're doing this for a perk. This is the change, but nowhere do we list the, um, permitted uses for a perk in this. We list all the permitted uses for industrial, but none, none of the prior downlist that we did for a perk. Is there a reason why we didn't do that?
Well, this is incorporating that document by reference. So all of those, if you were in one of these districts where a data center is either a use allowed by special exception or a by right use, the adoption of this language would require you to comply with the standards of the perk zoning ordinance. And so there's, there's not a need to list every use because this incorporates that entire document by reference.
Well, I guess that's why I was confused because we have the per, uses permitted by right for industrial in every one of these.
But industrial would be by right now.
That is correct. A data center is a by right use right now.
If you are having industrial zoning, you can put a data center in there by right because we haven't determined by right for data centers. Some counties have, have restricted that and some have not. That's why they're listed there. That's the only difference.
Okay. I, I was just looking because I didn't see that. And I didn't see the separate section that since we were referencing, I thought it would have been in here. That's all.
So we're clear?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and I'm sure Mr., I'm sure Mr. McKenzie, uh, based on our agreement, will allow me to have one public hearing and three separate votes? Yeah, I knew you'd say that. All right. You have anything else to add, Mr. Hughes?
I just, as a follow up to Mr. Sealy's question, just so I'm clear, as it stands right this instant, any M1 property can construct a data center?
That is correct, sir.
After this is passed, then it would work, it would require it to be M1 and then meet the requirements of the perk.
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
That's exactly the difference. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. We are going to have one public hearing for text amendment 18, 2023, text amendment 19, 2023, and text amendment 2023. I will declare those public hearings to be open. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Hearing none? The public hearing is declared closed. How does the board wish to dispose of text amendment 18? I almost did all three of them. Text amendment 18, 2023. Motion to approve would restrict, as, uh, Mr. Forehand said, we have to vote one at a time.
Make a motion, we approve text amendment. Make a motion, we approve text amendment eighteen dash twenty twenty three.
I need a second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Forehand, seconded by Mrs. Long. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Motion for text amendment nineteen, twenty twenty three.
I'll make a motion, we we approve text amendment seventeen, I'm sorry, nineteen dash twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Forehand, seconded by Mrs. Long. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, that motion also carries unanimously.
Now make a motion, we uh, pass or um, approve text amendment twenty dash twenty twenty three.
Is there a second, a second uh, motion made by Mr. Forehand, seconded by Mr. Underwood? Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, that motion too carries unanimously. Thank you, lady and gentlemen. Uh, unfinished business. Updates on Low Massey Park? Is that you now, Mr. Parton? Or is that Mr. Sheba?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Mr. Sheba could probably give an update on uh, what what's happened out there, but uh, we hadn't prepared a lot tonight. Uh, was understanding, Mr. Underwood uh, had had an update that he wanted to give as well, so.
Oh, you want to give the update? Okay. Mine doesn't make any noise at all.
Um, as you know, the the Dawn Progressive Association. Returned the property to the county for the park, Low Massey Park. Um, earlier this year, when we had the bad windstorm, the pavilion was destroyed. And the the pavilion now is back up and has been relocated to a central part in the park. So it came out of the woods and back uh, closer to the parking lot. So that is now completed. Um, the playground equipment is still um, in the woods and we're looking at assessment to see if that can be used. But we'd like to move that closer to the the walking track away from the woods. Because it's basically in the woods and it's not accessible. So I'm asking Mr. Sheba to give me a cost of what it would cost to. Um, either move that equipment and use that, or if we have to buy some new equipment, to buy new. Six Mrs. Fields is ninety four. And I think we should give them their flowers at this time, so I hope the board will support me in that effort. And we're looking forward to making that park, Low Massey Park, a wonderful park. For that side of the county to be used by all the residents.
I I would concur with that, Mrs. Fields is is a Caroline County icon and and would deserve that for all the things she did for the county. But one thing, I think you and I discussed this uh. Briefly last summer or 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 the year before. Mr. Sheba, when I was in high school, which was back in the eighteen hundreds. We actually had um, on our playground. A temporary swimming pool. That was set up there just from the time school was out and they took it down right before school started. I'm sure those still exist. And there's, there's nothing like that in in that side of the county. Can you look and see what something like that would cost for us?
Oh, Mr. Thomas, back in your day, we used to have metal slides um, that are illegal now. Um, I can see a lot of issues.
For rubbing it in.
Of having, I had them as I was a kid luckily, but they weren't sturdy. No, I mean, we got burned every once in a while, but not enough that you couldn't, you still didn't kept riding, right?
Rub some dirt on and keep going.
Um, we can look into it, but um, the problem that you've got is fencing and trying to keep it secure and the liability if someone should drill in, there's not someone there watching it twenty four hours a day, so. But we can look into that and and give you some ideas, there are pools that you can fill up that homeowners can buy. They got a ring at the top and they fill up, so they are required and people know this, but you're required even with a little pool, to have a fence, four foot fence around a pool. Um, so any, any of that will be required to have a fence put around that.
Well, anything when I was a kid definitely got played in, but what they did was they had uh, sheeting that they laid over the pool. So once they closed it for the day, you couldn't really get into it. So if you could look into that, I mean, that's something. There's, there's, I think there's a pool or access to a pool in everybody's district except Mr. Underwood's and mine. Yeah, I don't have a park.
Some are, some are um, exclusive to the subdivision, some are exclusive to the subdivision, so like I can't go swim in Lake Caroline without having an invite from someone. Or Lake Land or their, or Ladies Smith Village, for instance.
Ladies Village is the same way, so. But I mean, if you, if you could just look into, if that's a possibility, great, if not, you know, at least we know we tried.
Okay.
Could I ask Mr. Sheba a question? Mr. Sheba, um, how much money would I need to put a park, I mean, playground equipment there if we can?
So the candy park, we spent eighty five thousand dollars on the playground equipment and installation. Um, and then incidentals for mulch and other things that we did or anywhere, close to a hundred thousand dollars for the the system at the candy park.
Just so the board is aware, I'm going to be coming back to the board asking. For playground equipment, um, for Low Massey Park. Um. And uh, it's, we're, I think we've looked at it and we're going to look at it again, if we can use it, we will, but I don't think it's usable, but. I'm going to be asking the board to um, support me on that effort. I have three real efforts that I didn't want to talk about during election time, where people could say, ah, he's trying to win. So I just, some things that we've worked on with the Low Massey Park that I'd like to see come to fruition there. And one is the renaming of the park, two is the naming of the pavilion, and three is putting playground equipment up.
And there is about seventy eight thousand dollars remaining from the Fog Level Fire Department, Fog Level Rescue Squad sale, um, that's still out there, so um, just for informational purposes.
So I'm hoping that maybe the board will allow me to use that money.
Uh, you'll have to check with Ms. Morgan first and see what the balance is and we'll go.
Seventy eight thousand. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Hughes, do we really want to talk about rural resorts again?
Sir, the only thing I would ask is some direction from the board. At the September twenty six meeting, you guys were going to provide some direction. In the interim, like I stated in the memo, we did a little research to address some of the questions that came up, relative to size of the structures. There's some information about what reducing the number to a hundred fifty acres, how many additional parcels that would add. So that that information is there for your information, only that I would ask is at some point in the near future, so we can put this. To move this on, yes, that we get your all's input.
All right. You, you have a question, sure.
Yeah, Mr. Hughes. I don't know if this thing's on or not.
On the resort issue with the smaller, with the smaller individual houses that that we were talking about. How are we going to enforce how many days somebody stays there? And you know what my mind constantly goes to when I see property, small facilities. People staying for no more than thirty days, I think it was a year. How do we enforce that?
So, as we said, in the ordinance, there is a requirement that the person would have to provide a report. Identifying how long people are going to be staying there. This is intended that an application would come along, it's intended that would be like a recreational facility, not like a long term stay facility. Um, and so that's why we identified the maximum size of the. Structures at nine hundred feet, so that it wouldn't necessarily be large enough to be a house, but it could accommodate a small family on a weekend. So it it comes down to enforcement there again. Like I said the last time, you know, we we have a very active community here. And if someone was doing something that was not in accordance with that. I'm pretty sure at some point the citizens and the neighbors would report it and then we would investigate. But there are reporting requirements built into the ordinance.
Any way to include the cost of. Inspections, say every month or every two months into a permit, or is that not kosher?
You could probably certainly do that, I don't think there are any prohibitions, I'd have to. Check the code and check with Chris to see if he had any issues with that, but you could draft an ordinance to contain pretty much whatever provision you would like.
As we said earlier, you know, it's a big county, it takes a long time for an employee to get from one side of the other to check for zoning violations. And every person we have to hire comes to have taxpayer money, so that's why. Twenty little cabins on two hundred acres back in the woods makes me a little nervous, although as someone who. Walks on a wildlife refuge all the time, I understand the the draw for it. Um, but I also don't want it to become a problem for us, so. That's some way you could look at it and the ordinance would be good.
Just to speak to that, a couple of points, we, I'll certainly work with uh, Mr. Hughes, what kind of language we could suggest on that. Um, certainly, I think the authorizing inspection of the property, I think to your point, the typical staff inspection of. Driving by the facility to determine compliance wouldn't be sufficient if these cabins are back in the woods, so that that to me is pretty low hanging fruit. Um, recovering costs associated with that is something we'll we'll need to look at to and propose a framework for you on. Um, and I just wanted to to touch on your earlier point, Mrs. Long. Um, this, this might be a bit different from some of the other issues that you might be thinking of in that. Um, these applications I would expect would come from uh, one property owner, one applicant. Um, if it's not the property owner, the applicant operating the facility, um, who will be held to compliance with the SPX. So if there are violations, you wouldn't be pursuing the individual occupants of the cabins, you'd be pursuing. The owner of the property and the operator of the facility.
All right, I'm going to make an executive decision, we're not going to talk about this for the next sixty days, so if you want to bring it back in January, that's fine, if you want to hold the board and say, what are we doing? That's fine too. All righty?
Very good, sir.
Thank you very much, and I know you put a lot of work into it and I do appreciate it. All right, agenda item number eight, at the request of Mr. Black. He wanted us, wanted us to discuss the proposed Aqua Virginia rate increase. Mr. Black?
I'm going to pass uh, something Mr. Sheba gave out to me earlier, it shows the rates, and I think you've kind of got them. Anyway, but um. Here's just a color code of.
I think I did the math, is it thirty percent, thirty one percent?
Thirty one percent increase, yeah, in rates.
Thank you.
So, um. If you, if you look at, um. And Mr. Sheba, is Mr. Sheba here?
In the back.
Okay. Mr. Sheba, does this include Lake Caroline too for water? So it'll be Lake Caroline for the water only, because Lake Caroline's water only. So if you look at the average customer, which is five thousand gallons per day. I know you guys can read this, but I'm just for the public, um, in Caroline County, um, the water customer is paying thirty three eighty five currently. And under their proposed bill, Aqua, they would be paying seventy seven seventy nine. And then if you look at the combined, um, I'm not going to do sewer only, but if you look at the combined water and sewer. Uh, someone in Ladies Smith Village for five thousand gallons of water is paying one twenty seven ninety three. And then Aqua's proposed rate increases, they would go from one sixty five sixty seven for five thousand gallons of water and sewer. Do two hundred and eight twenty nine, that's per month. It's per month. And um, I know we're talking about all kinds of different issues in the county, but um, this is, this is straining, this is a thirty percent raise. And uh, you know, I asked for some numbers today from, and I I know I asked them for last minute, but I had asked for some numbers from social services. But uh, I I don't know if you guys remember the map that we got on where social services were provided by a misneed a while back. And a lot of those were in the western Carolina area, which surprised me honestly. Uh, and then when you stop and think about it, makes sense because population density is in the western Carolina Ladies Smith uh, area. And a lot of those people who live in the Ladies Smith area are under the umbrella of Aqua Virginia. So imagine, I mean, we talk about here when we do a tax increase. When, when we go up a penny or two pennies, you know, we argue about can someone afford it? You know, uh, you're you're looking at. You're looking at an increase. Of fifty, sixty dollars a month. On their water and sewer bill. With a thirty percent increase, I mean, do the math on that, I mean, that's, I mean, you're you're going up, you're going up six hundred dollars a year. Seven, what's that? Seven hundred and twenty. Um, and I mean, if we raise people's taxes. On an average income family, seven hundred and twenty dollars in a year. Could you imagine what would happen to all of us in an election year? We wouldn't be here.
Wouldn't make it to the election.
Yeah, we wouldn't even make it to the election year. Um, and this is, um. You know, one of the things that's very difficult with this situation is, and you guys know this, is, you know, competition and and in a free market, there's competition. If I don't like my cell service from Verizon, I can go to Comcast, I can go to T-Mobile, I can go to AT&T. When you start talking about electricity and water, you have no choice. This is a monopoly. This is a monopoly that's regulated by the state. But. You know, it it's, the state has been friendly to them in the past. Um. And. Other counties and localities are very much waking up that are under um, under their yoke, that are waking up to this is, this is abuse. And these people are our citizens, I mean, you're talking. You know, in Lake Land or we have sixteen hundred homes. Okay, in Bridlewood, I don't know, seventy five homes. Campbell's Creek, they serve Campbell's Creek, I don't know how many homes are in there, Mr. Forehand. Um, but they serve them, you know, they're in Lake Caroline now with the water only. And even the water only bill is is is. Insane. And now we're talking, I mean, people on the Harrier side, Lake Land, they don't wash their cars, they don't water their lawns. Uh, because of the fact that they know they they can't afford it in the summertime, I mean, they 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 skimp on, take short showers, I mean, they do everything, low flush toilets. And this is, cannot be good for the community, and I've heard the argument. You know, a lot of the people that move into these subdivisions now are moving in from northern Virginia. And so when you look in comparison to like Fairfax or Prince William. Of course, a mortgage down here is much cheaper, much more affordable. So I I've heard people say, well, the trade off, I understand going in, you know, that the the water bill is, is going to be part of it, because my my mortgage is going to be. You know, a thousand dollars less, so I'll take the two hundred dollar water bill. But for the people that are here, the residents who have been here a long time, uh, this is a burden that is. This is just not, this is just not good for those residents. And I wish I had a magic wand to know what the answer is. Uh, but I think that we, I would like to see at our next meeting. Uh, if the board is okay with this. I don't know what the answer is, but I I don't think we can just sit here and let them do a thirty percent rate increase without fighting it. Their their rate increases in the past have always been ten, twelve, fifteen percent. And the SCC usually gives them ten percent, okay, twelve percent. Um, I think one time the the best we did was, you know, was seven percent. But this is a whole, this is a whole other animal, this is thirty percent. And uh, I mean, we have to make a statement, some sort of statement to the citizens that we're just done putting up with this. It is, it is, when is it going to end? You know, I'm really, I I don't know. But I would like to see if we could possibly, if you guys would be all right with it, and Miss Long too, I mean, I would be all right if we could combine with other localities. Um, to. To um, in a, in a, well, in a suit. Um, against them to to uh, at least to fight this rate increase. I know Fluvana has more customers than we do. I know Nelson County has several, if we could have county administration between now and December reach out and say, we could all combine together as one, rather than fight them individually. And just say, look, we, whatever, whatever it takes here. Um, and I I just, I I don't know what the answer is. But I'm willing to listen to your suggestions, but I I don't know, I don't, I don't think we as. I can't in good conscience just not do anything. I I feel like if we did nothing, then we would be turning our backs on 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 uh. On our citizens that are served by Aqua.
Mr. Black, I told you the last time that that we should stop fighting the. Mr. Black, I told you the last time that, that we should stop fighting the rate increase and do something drastic. And, and I have not wavered from that position. I was looking in my email and unfortunately, I think I was forced to reduce the size because, you know, I save everything. Back in the 90s, we were fighting Aqua every three years. And we still fight them every three years. And it's gotten to the point where it's abusive. So I would wholeheartedly agree that we look with other localities and figure out a way we can all join together and fix the situation permanently. Mr., did you have any?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I believe some of you may have already received this, obviously you're talking about it. But just to clarify the old way of doing things, the repeated way of doing things, we have an application for the rate increase before the SCC, which is what you've been discussing. And I just wanted to highlight for the board that the deadline to file a notice of participation is at the end of January. So if, I know you're talking about another approach, but if you wanted to participate in this, in the SCC application where they are requesting authorization for the 30% rate increase, the deadline to file that notice of participation, which is just a page or two document, we've done it before, is at the end of January. So I wanted to make you aware of that.
I think, I think you're saying the decision by our December meeting, which is another month away.
Well, I think that we would have to give staff time to contact the other localities. And then those boards would have to vote on it. You know, I, I don't want to say too much, but I think it is, I'm not opposed to what you're saying, Mr. Thomas, at all. I mean, looking, exploring any alternative, but I mean, in the short term, in the short term, I feel like we owe our citizens to go 100. I mean, when does it end? You know, so I think there is a short term and a long term approach to this. So, I mean, if it gets voted down, it gets voted down, but I would, would, would like to see staff, at least if it's okay with the board, to come up with a number of what the, what the cost would be and splitting it with other jurisdictions, any research that could be done there to come back to at our December meeting, if that's, if that would be okay. And at least we would have concrete numbers what the cost of the suit would be and other localities that would be willing. At the VACO conference that we were at, I was able to talk to other jurisdictions and, just put it that way, they are not happy. Some of the other jurisdictions are not happy with the service and the price increases. So we're not the only one in here. It's just, unfortunately, I don't think this is made at the state level yet because they just don't service enough territory. I think they only have 38,000 customers in the state of Virginia. It just happens to be in Fluvana and Caroline, they have a good chunk. So it definitely affects our two, our two localities big time.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's basically a staff direction thing. So we're asking staff to look some more. I don't think we necessarily need a vote, it's just a request of staff to do some more.
I think that's a good idea, Mr. Black. And because we'll get the information and see if anyone's interested, then we can be prepared to move forward. But I also would suggest that maybe we, we push or get notice out through the homeowners associations or what. If individual owners write personal notes saying this is, this is going to affect me and flood that office, each letter is a vote.
I wish that was the case, but.
One of the, one of the things, Ms. Long, which I put out a newsletter, like I hand out a newsletter at the polls. And one of the things I put on mine, and I can send it to you, is how citizens can comment on their rate increase at the State Corporation Commission. So there's a way that they can do that. And so I will urge citizens, here's, I'm going to put this out in the next day or two. And I'm going to encourage them, here's the directions, here's the website you go to, you go to the, here's the comment section on the proposed rate increase. Because it is going to be very, very burdensome to a lot of families. And, you know, I, I don't know how that's justified, but that's another, another thing. Thank you.
All right.
Is it, is it possible to use the county automated message board and move that to near the neighborhoods? That, is that, would that be an appropriate use?
Sure, it's a good use.
I mean, just to inform them that they can contact the SCC?
They all probably got a rate increase, increase, increase notice from them. But yeah, chief, can we move on our message boards there? Okay. All right, we can do that.
Yeah, they can give them directions. I mean, they need clear directions on how to, yes.
We would have, you know, we have Lake Caroline, Lake Landor, Campbell's Creek, Bridlewood.
Elson or subdivision.
Woods in there, too?
Yeah.
You're limited to like 15 characters on four pages, so it's not a lot that you can fit on those message boards. They're, they're to give shorts, precise information.
Aqua rate increase, do such.
Yeah, something.
Yeah, see website.
Yeah, that, I mean, it'd have to be something short like that in order for it to fit on that message board.
But at least we're trying to get it out so folks know, so.
Yeah, and I, just to reiterate, I mean, every customer of Aqua should have received a copy of this notice. So they should have it in their, the full detailed one in their mail. And it's obviously available online. And there, the, I guess while I'm at the podium, the deadline for customer for public comment is April of 2024.
Right, it's, it's going to take a while before this happens. Did, did other board members get a copy of their rate increase request? Because I know they sent one to the chair. I don't know if they sent them to all aboard. They sent it to me, I sent it to the.
I think it's, according to this, it's the chair and me.
Okay. All right, so that's a direction we still have. We're going to do something, try to have something ready in December. January at the latest, we can decide to participate. And April is, is the end of comment time. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, Mr. Sealy. We've both spoken to Mr. Beasley, so go right ahead.
I got contacted by Pam Beasley, Pastor Beasley's wife, because her brother-in-law is Tony Beasley. And so I sent an email to everyone saying that I'd been contacted and she asked me if I would take the lead on working out some details. So here's what I've done. I contacted the state fair. They're willing to give us a deal on the up top pavilion, Mr. Underwood, I don't know what it's called. No, not the mansion, the pavilion, the, and with some great rates for that. Right now, we, Tony Beasley can do the 7th. That building's available on the 7th of December. If, if we would put a budget together to actually, because I think you're going to need a riser for, for that many folks because they're anticipating, I don't know, 500, they want to have it open, as I said, to, to the public and some, some friends of theirs that are really excited about this. The 7th of December. They told me that, it's, yeah, but they told us that there's access to that through gate two. So it's, it's not a problem. We probably need a riser and I have contacted one of Shamika Latney Baker's folks that does balloon art because I think that would be easy to do on risers in the colors of the Rangers. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Black, you both know way more about sports than I do. So I, I figure one of the two of you could emcee that better than me. Mr. Chairman, you're probably. It would be an evening, six or seven o'clock in the evening, so that folks could come. It's a Thursday.
So let's go over all the stuff we were, we're trying to do because this is a big thing for the county. It's a big thing for Tony.
Tony Beasley and.
To win the World Series. So you've got, trying to do something on the 7th of December.
Correct.
He said yesterday he was going to, he wanted to be in the parade, which is.
Which is the 9th.
The 9th.
So we would do this before the parade, which I think would be better than after.
And, and we're going to ask him to come back to the board of supervisors on the 12th. So those three things, we're going to make sure everybody in the county has a chance to see our World Series champion.
Correct.
And those three dates. So Mr. Parton, do you have all of that as far as dates? Okay. County, state fair, parade, board of supervisors. Mr. Parton will work out all the details and budget for staff?
Well, what I was going to say is let's give them a budget and I'll give them the details that the state fair sent me because they've given us a great rate. I can put him in touch with the balloon art people. Because I think if we get a riser that's up like two feet and we could probably rent that so that you can see, you're not, because the flat floor, even this isn't flat. I was just looking at the actual logistics of that building. I was in it for the young entrepreneurs and took a look at it because I was there going. And they told me that they'd done another event there. And then maybe some finger food, they asked if Chef Jazz could be looked at for that.
Good idea.
So just trying to keep it in the county, keep it with folks that are here.
Mr. Sealy?
Sir?
Would, would the high school, have we pursued the high school gymnasium as an option? That way we'd have a, he would have a, I don't know, but it's a Thursday night.
I was just trying to get it someplace that there was a lot of parking and it was easy to do and they have a lot of what we need. I thought about the gym, but I just, these are going to be older folks, too. You don't want them going up and down on.
Yeah, we would just, we wouldn't need the riser and has the parking and the access. I don't know, I was just.
That is a good idea and the booth guy would be right there, yeah.
And it's more centrally located.
Doesn't matter, I have an offer from the state fair. That was the easiest thing to do.
Can you investigate the school, too? And then we, then we'll, we won't have an opportunity to have another board meeting to, to figure it out, but you can contact.
Do we want to set a budget?
Yeah.
The fair, the fair venue is not that expensive.
Yeah, let's keep those numbers quiet because we might be getting a good deal.
We're getting a good deal and I don't want to read them out.
Yeah, make sure you give that to Mr. Parton. I think we're saying probably something, 10,000?
I, I was 5,000, I thought would give us.
Not to exceed 5,000 or something like that. That's, that seems very little and we'll come back, but that's.
If it goes beyond that, we can start. I'm just, I was just trying to come because we don't have another board meeting.
Now, the only issue is Friday, he's having a minor surgery, he said.
Well, he, he told me that he'll be up in two weeks and he's up and running. He and I have talked at length about that.
Minor, minor surgery. There's no such thing as minor surgery.
Right.
So let's hope it all works out fine and we, you know, we can go from there. But that's, that's a direction, Mr. Parton. I know you and, and the finance director will be able to work something out great and work with the schools. And of course, Mrs. Hall will be involved in everything. And we'll, we'll try to, yeah, try to get the schools involved and we'll try to restart that petition drive we had a while back to name the baseball field after him, which may work a lot smoother now. All right, thank you, Mr. Sealy, for working through that. I think.
We need.
All right, yeah, let's go ahead and make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, we designate $5,000 for the celebration.
Unencumbered balance.
Unencumbered balance for the Tony Beasley celebration as World Series. And Mr. Chairman, you'll.
I'll second that for you.
And you'll, you will emcee that?
Sure. We can talk baseball.
Right.
The 7th?
I was trying to keep out, I, I don't know all the school dates. That's why I was going to someplace that they could guarantee us a place. Yeah, let's just, because the echo.
The D D said he could do that.
Absolutely, the 7th.
Hanover?
No, that's right in Caroline.
No, their, their address is Hanover, I'm just teasing, or their mailbox. Okay. Mr. Parton, you got all those details? We're going to really count on you because, because we want this to be something great. So I know you can take care of it and once, once you tell Mrs. Hall to take care of it, it's all great. All right.
We have a motion to, you didn't vote.
We have, we don't have a second. No, no, I made the second.
I made the second.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. I knew that was going to pass. Passed unanimously. Mr. Parton gave us a sheet for the Rappahannock proposed town hall meeting. And there are all these dates.
Any date we pick is a snow day now.
Is there any date that would be an issue? So Monday, the 15th is Martin Luther King's birthday.
So, Mr. Chairman, currently, staff and our engineers are doing listening sessions with some individuals such as the Friends of the Rappahannock, the Rappahannock Tribe, Essex County Conservation Alliance, trying to, they've sent letters, trying to understand their concerns. And then we've heard that, you know, that people didn't realize this project was going on and Rappahannock River is dry and how is this going to impact them? So what we're hoping to do is take this listening session, wrap all that into a town hall meeting. We've already had the public meeting that was required, the public hearing. So this is really an opportunity for the citizens to come out and hear again about the Rappahannock intake project, you know, prior to DEQ and the Virginia Marine Resource Commission having their hearings.
And this, this project has really, for those who don't know, been going on for 20 years.
Yes, sir.
Because we've been trying to get some sort of constant water supply. All right, out of the clear blue, what's a date that, that people think is going to be okay? Three months in advance, two months in advance.
I don't think Wednesday night's a great night because it's typically a church night.
Yeah, Wednesday's a good point. January, what? January 25th, Thursday? Who said no? Is that Mr. Collins?
Yeah, planning commission work sessions at night.
Oh.
Thursday, January 25th.
Okay. We can share that date with them or share a place with them?
Monday, the 22nd or Thursday, the 11th.
Oh, boy. All right, we're going to pick Monday, the 22nd. Wait. Monday Night Football's over by then?
There's no Monday night football at that late.
Yeah, because the playoffs start. I, I'm just saying, that's the same thing. There's a basketball game at the high school, Monday Night Football, somebody won't come. All right, we're picking, we're picking Monday, January 22nd, right now.
Thank you.
Locked and stone, we're good.
We got it, we'll schedule it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other informational items, Mr. Parton, calendar? Oh, Mr. Shebel. I need, can, can you give me a call tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Parton, calendar items?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just real quick, Chief Law Office has included some nice photos of, before and after photos of the, the work done at Frog Level Fire Department to vastly improve the apparatus base ceiling. Coming up next week, of course, is Thanksgiving week. County offices will close at noon on Wednesday and then be closed for Thanksgiving on Thursday and then the Friday afterwards. And I think that is it, sir.
And that follows, that's along with the state, states.
State schedule.
State schedule.
Yes, sir, the board granted the additional half day in accordance with the state schedule.
Did anybody go to Take Your Legislator to School Day? Mr. Howard? Did he go to?
That I don't know. Wish we were all at the.
Did anyone from staff go to the Take Your Legislator to School Day at the schools? I know, but we'd ask them to go. Okay, so nobody did, all right. Okay, closing board comments, and then we'll go back to closed meeting and try to finish up what we had there. Mr. Forehand? Mr. Black? Mr. Sealy? Mrs. Long?
No comments, but Mr. Shebel, what time do you think the meeting is going to start?
Didn't project very well.
Yeah, on the 24th, probably six or seven.
Time will the meeting start for the town hall?
We're not going to remember till then.
I got to put it on my calendar, though, that's a.
Hey, Clay, we got a meeting on Wednesday, the 24th.
Five, six?
I like that one. But wait, wait.
I just want to put it on my calendar.
Yeah, we can do 6:00, 6:30, 7:00, probably a little earlier, 6:00 would be a good time.
6:00, got you. Thank you.
Mr. Underwood, closing board comments? And I have none either. Motion to go back into closed session one more time. Into the breach one more time. Mr. Sealy has to read the. Into the breach one more time. Mr. Sealy has to read the motion as is to make sure we're compliant. Mr. Sealy, one more time.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this board convene in closed meeting pursuant to the personnel exemption of section 2.2 dash 3711A, A dot one, the Code of Virginia, to discuss employment of the county administrator and building official.
We have to.
Well, no, we didn't. We only departed.
Okay, county administrator, right.
So the cybersecurity exemption of section 2.2 dash 3711 dot A dot 19 of the Code of Virginia to discuss plans to protect county information technology systems from cybersecurity threats and briefings from staff and services that can protect against such threats. And are we done with real estate? Are we?
Yeah.
We're not.
We're done with, um, we are done with real estate. We just have contract and legal on the performance agreement.
Okay. So I do need the performance. Do I have the?
Performance agreement we have to do.
All right. The real, uh, real estate, uh, for consultation with the county attorney and discussion and staff regarding performance agreeing, agreement relating to an economic development project and the potential acquisition of real estate for county use. I can't get past that. Utility expansion product both in Port Royal, but not related to one another where discussion foregoing these open discussions would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the county.
All right, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. We're in closed meeting. We will, uh, be back shortly with, if there is an action item. Uh, Mr. Parton, if you'd like, you can send the staff home? Or was that their plan anyhow?
David Sager.
No, the other guy.
Mr. Chairman, I move it to the Caroline County Board of Supervisors to the best of each board members knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting, to which the certification applies that only such business matters which were identified in the motion, convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Is there a second to Mr. Sealy's motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mr. Black to come out of closed meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Forehand, do you certify that only those things we went into closed meeting were discussed in the closed meeting?
I so certify.
Mr. Black, do you certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Sealy?
I so certify.
Mrs. Long?
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood?
And I also certify. We have one action item and it is a motion. I will make the motion to designate David Sadler as currently IT Director as the Chief Information Officer, and Andy Kiss currently the Security Analyst as the Chief Information Security Officer, in accordance with the county's security policies.
Second.
Discussion on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We stand adjourned.
For what?
Well, that was fun. Another day in paradise.